To the Coalition at eight this morning in this.
Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, September the eighth, and we are here for a school board briefing. Thank you all for being here today. Today on the agenda, we have two items under executive services, one item under academic service, two items under board attorney recommendation, followed by public comments, board member comments, attorney comments, and superintendent comments. And I know Ms. Vaughn is going to be just a few minutes behind, so if we could start off with the executive services, and could you please introduce yourself when you walk up to the podium? Thank you. Oh, or where you're sitting.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Ryan Hudek, the coordinator of civil rights and equity, and with me today is Mr. Chuck Bradley, the director of positive prevention. And we're here today to go over the revisions of the school district policy 4.14, which covers bullying and harassment. So to start out, that this is not a new policy, it's a current policy where we made some minor revisions and updates to it. It obviously is to prevent bullying and harassment, not only in the schools, but as work sites as well, if it's an adult issue. It is primarily statute and model policy based, so that is why it is rather lengthy. And if you look at other districts, they are pretty much similar to this. The Florida Department of Education has a model policy, as well as a checklist that tells us what needs to be included in the policy, as well as provides definitions and particular language. So we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with this with the update, and went through and checked off all those boxes. And specific to our district, the things that would coincide with this would be the student code of conduct, which would provide parents and students information on bullying and harassment, as well as the administrators have a process document at school sites, informs them how to deal with bullying and harassment if it does occur. The revision is, the purpose is to be in line with statute 1,006.147. This is also the Jeffrey Johnson Stand Up For All Students Act. I believe it's imperative for this district, as this act did come from, it originated from a Lee County school, and I believe Chairwoman Fisher was involved, so she understands the process and the hard work the parent went through to get this statute enacted to prevent bullying and harassment. So it's imperative that we do keep this up to date and refresh it periodically per the statute.
Mr. Hudek, could you please speak into the microphone, or get maybe a little bit closer, they're having a hard time understanding.
Is that better?
Is that better? Yes, thank you.
Okay. The main points of the revisions that we did with the policy was, first of all, was just the formatting of it. The prior version was rather lengthy and monotonous, so I took the Florida Department of Education model policy and just incorporated those headings and subheadings to make it less monotonous, and also easier to find relative information that's needed within the policy. There are also updates to the Cessor codes, which is any time an incident is reporting at the school, obviously bullying and harassment are codes in the Cessor, but there were also updated codes, Cessor Incorporated, so we just mirrored those to include them in our policy as well. We also incorporated the Hope Scholarship notification per Florida statute 1,002.40. This is, parents need to be notified if their child was bullied or harassed, and the gist of it is that those parents are notified, and they are given the option of transferring their child to another public school. And I believe there's also some options for private schools as well, but this is something we wanted to put in since it was updated since the last revision. And then the most important thing we wanted to include was, we wanted to mirror our non-discrimination policy. That was approved in June. We obviously included a bigger scope of individuals protected under this non-discrimination and harassment, so we wanted to mirror that language into the 4.14, which is now incorporated into this new policy. Updating this policy, per the statute, it's required that it's vetted through various subgroups. So we took this policy and presented to subgroups such as parents, law enforcement, administrators, students, and community members, and asked them to provide feedback upon reviewing it. Some of this was done live, others, due to the circumstances, were emailed the policy and given time to provide feedback if they desired. I would like to thank the people that did take time to write feedback, it is as valuable to us, and the feedback was important for us, and we took some of that feedback into consideration and tweaked some of the language in the policy based on that feedback. Based on the feedback we did receive from these subgroups and community members, it was a positive. A lot of the community members said that the policy was good, and they were happy to see that we were including them to have information, as well as preventing bullying harassment from occurring in the schools. So other than that, Mr. Bradley and I are here, if you have any specific questions of the revisions of the policy that we made. Again, there was no major revisions to it, just some minor updates. I realize the redline version shows like the first whole page as red, but that is just because it was reformatted. So even though there are chunks that appear to be revised, if you put that up side by side, you can see that that information was there, it's just I want to format it, it did turn it red. So if you guys have any questions for Mr. Bradley or I? Over.
Ms. Fisher? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for this. And yes, this is lengthy, as you said in the beginning. So as I reviewed it, I looked at, number one, the prohibited conduct. So it tells you where and when, but it doesn't tell you what. And it does say as defined here, but the definition is not found until further down. Then the same information about the when and where is repeated in three C, A, B, C, and then also in the investigation piece. So I think that that might be part of what is lending to the length of the policy, and I wasn't sure if those repetitions were necessary or in any way in compliance with the statute. So.
Right, and it is somewhat repetitive. If you look at their model policy and their checklist as well, it is, some of it is repeated, and the definitions are all from the Florida Department of Education, as well as the statute. I mean, I can look, we can look at, if you think it's redundant, we can look at removing some of it if it is mentioned later, we can do that as well. I understand it's the pre-briefing for this.
One of the other things that I noted in 8A2, let's see. Second, let me just get down here. Oh, in the referrals, okay. And so, eight.
What line?
8A2, line 406, page nine of 12. So investigator may refer victim and/or perpetrator to his or her guidance counselor. So the term statutorily and according to the American Association of School Counselors and the Florida Association of School Counselors is school counselor, not guidance counselor. So I just wanted to mention that on behalf of my former colleagues. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, thank you very much. Couple of questions. Piggybacking on what Ms. Fisher was saying about the redundancy, and I don't know if this is a legal question, can we legally refer to things later on back to page, line, whatever, rather than repeating?
I mean, you could. I mean, I just, like I said, this was.
Has her hand up. Oh, sorry. Ms. DePerey, Biruna.
Board members. This policy, I reviewed it as well, this policy is specifically based on the model policy provided by the Department of Education. Their policy is just as lengthy, so we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with what they expected to have in these policies.
Right, thank you.
Okay. And my, I'm sorry, were you going to say something to that as well?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, my second.
I think she answered it for him.
Okay. My second question has to do with, you mentioned that it had been viewed by a community group and citizens in the community. My question to that is, who was on that committee? How were they chosen? And also, did it include NAACP, EDAC, and DAC?
Yes, all three of those were included. I have a list, I can send you guys the information of everyone included as well, but those three that you didn't mention were all included.
Okay, if you can possibly get us that information.
Yeah, I can give you that information.
Okay, and as far as on that committee, what about, you know, staff is from schools, like teachers and?
Yes, teachers were included and TAC.
Okay. And how do you go about choosing people that are not on like NAACP, EDAC, or DAC?
We, the chief legal sent out to all the chiefs information requesting people that would be community members to contact, and those are the people that I contacted and looked at, different ethnic groups as well, and reached out to various ethnic groups, groups that deal with students with disabilities, et cetera, just trying to cover a scope of basically anyone that could be listed in that discrimination policy, like the women's organization. So based on any type of discrimination that could be found, an organization that would deal under that realm.
Okay, and I would just suggest, I don't know about the other board members, I know I have a social media presence in the community, at least in the community that I represent, and it might be helpful to be able to put something like that out to get a more far-reaching selection of individuals. And because a lot of times, if something comes from the district, the regular, everyday person that is, that may be affected by this would not feel comfortable or even know to volunteer to be on a part of this. So I would like to ask in the future if we could reach out even to any of the board members that want to, you know, get their community involved and submit an application or whatever to be part of it.
Yeah, we can do that. And just to clarify, it wasn't just committee people, I did reach out to various groups, and I gave a introduction of who I was and what I do and what we're doing for this. And like I said, I do have a chart with all those individuals, and I will provide that to you.
Okay, and thank you. And I'm not, you know, going against you, I'm just making a suggestion, but thank you.
Well, and I do believe if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bradley, this is, we, this has been going on for over a year, and the committees, and even out at the Stars Complex, this was all brought to those meetings and introduced, and I think Success Academy, just a lot of different places. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that this has been out there, and it has been going through quite a few people.
And can I just make one comment on that? I know the Stars Complex and, you know, and places in Fort Myers, but we also, you know, district-wide, I think it could have been a little more expansive.
Right, no, they were just some of the names I just mentioned. I mean, there was many different places, those were just the ones that, off the top of my head, that I just spewed out, so. Are there any other questions, please? Ms. Chievenelli?
The portion about the Hope Scholarship, so that's awesome that that's been added, because I know parents aren't really aware of it, so taking it that step further and asking, I mean, and contacting the parents, I think is really good for this policy, and I'm glad to see that. My question, though, and when I read it, it says qualifying incident, so it does, is that in line with the actual statute? Because I thought that the Hope Scholarship, if there was incident and it was, it was recorded in the incident report, and that was sufficient to be able to receive the Hope Scholarship, so.
Hope Mr. Bradley can speak more to that, but as, it has to be, it can't just be any alleged incident, it has to be a qualifying, and I know he can speak more to that as well.
It has to meet the requirements of the, of the policy itself, governing what constitutes bullying. It can be an unsubstantiated bullying incident, so, but it has to follow the, the reporting procedure that's outlined in the policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was that it, Ms. Chievenelli? Okay, is, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is community engagement.
I just want to make sure we have consensus to move forward with bullying policy to the formal rulemaking process.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is, what is the next part of the process? I'm sorry.
To move it forward to the formal rulemaking process, so it becomes a formal policy of the board.
Thank you.
So when, and when will that come before us, then, if we approve this now?
Well, if we proceed, we should be able to get it, I think, for the 22nd, and then move it forward till, I believe the next meeting will be October 6th, and then we'll be final. We need to go through the 28 days for the formal process.
So this begins the 28 days, then? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have consensus? Seven, seven zero, thank you, passes. Ms. Lancaster?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, board members. It's a pleasure to be here today to present to you on some of the community engagement efforts that have been taking place in the communications department over the last few months. I'm Armae Lancaster, Director of Strategic Communications. With me is Adam Malloy, Coordinator of Community Engagement. And we also added Rob Spiker, our Assistant Director of Media Relations, as he assisted in putting this presentation together, although he is out this week. So we're going to give you a quick overview of some of our community reach, some of the methods that we use to get information out to our community, that includes our media partners and social media platforms, some of our community outreach that includes civic, faith-based, and underserved communities. We'll give you some examples of some of our engagement plans in action, that, of course, you already have information on, so we'd love to share how we're involved. Some plans we have for the future, one of the ones we're more excited about is Parent University, so we'll give you some details on what we're hoping to do this year. And we'll also talk about our theory in action, and how we're working to improve our relationships from district to school-based parent organizations, so that we're streamlining our communication out to the schools. So first, we wanted to talk about our usual method of, our main method of communication with our families, which is school messenger. Wanted to give an example of how we're slowly increasing our reach. Last year, our superintendent's welcome back message reached 93,000 families. This year, we were able to increase it by 3,000 to 96,755. In addition to that, we regularly are reaching families with approximately 52,000 phone calls and 81,000 texts. That is when we're delivering messages at the district level. We realize it isn't a perfect platform, we know that families sometimes still have difficulties, sometimes there's filters that need to be cleared, or maybe spelling errors, so we continue to communicate with our families as to how they can better ensure that they are receiving messages via school messenger. However, we understand that it is never going to be 100% reach, which is why we use different communication methods, in hopes that they will get any communication we want to be, we want to put out via one of these platforms. Media partners is, of course, one of the biggest ways we use to get information out. This just shows you a little overview of our coverage between 2019 and 2020. It only includes stories by local newspapers and TV stations that are posted on their website. A lot of times, it isn't just the reach that we put on our website, but in their websites as well, in addition to their social media platforms. For example, NBC's Two post recently, they have 283,000 followers, and a recent story on football games, allowing spectators got 118 likes, 55 comments, and 20 shares. The news press also regularly shares stories that go statewide and across the country. It increases our exposure even more. For example, a story in May mentioning our graduation plans reached 5.2 million. While our main efforts obviously are reaching our communities here in Lee County, I think it says a lot when we're able to share what we're doing across the state and even across the country. Priority Marketing puts together a monthly report that includes not just what's on the website, but also what airs during their newscast. Sometimes we're unable to capture that online, so they provide us with how many times a clip might have aired, even if it's a short clip, not a full story. And amazingly, we reach millions every month, because we do have organizations in Tampa and all the way down to Southern Florida that will repeat some stories that have to do with our area. So this is also really good information to have, and to know that what we're doing is reaching such a high population. We have also increased our presence in Spanish media. We're now appearing monthly on a, on a community affair show called Acción Hispana that airs weekly on Univision.
Ms. Lancaster, I know it's really difficult with these masks on, but it's really muffled.
Sure.
They're having a hard time.
No problem, I'm happy to speak up. Thank you. Okay.
You said something about a Spanish station, and then that was it.
Sure, so I was sharing that we have increased our presence in Spanish media. Is that better? No, that's not better? Okay. I can't get any closer, is that better?
I can't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just, it's very muffled.
Yeah, my mic is right, and yeah, I don't know, can we turn the volume up back there?
It's not a volume issue, it's just muffled, I can't make out one word from the other, it's like word soup, all smooshed up.
Okay, well, I will keep trying. No, that's okay.
It's just the situation.
I want to hang on your every word, I want to hear everything you have to say, and I can't hear any of it.
No, that's okay, I will, I will keep trying, I don't know, I can adjust, see if that helps. Does that help at all?
Yes, thank you.
A little bit, okay, so just kind of moving it around a little bit.
You want to try this mic?
No, I think Ms. Patricus.
I think it's the mic, I think it's the mask part, because if we're having difficulty understanding, it's the understanding part of the muffling, then other, the audience definitely.
Sure.
Is having an issue.
How about that? Does that help a little bit?
Up was better, when you lifted it up a little bit, and then moved it up, no, the mask, if you lift it up, like so that it's on your chin, and then.
Okay, is that better?
It gives you a little more room to speak.
It's better.
Okay.
You have to continue, go ahead.
That's okay, no, that's okay, apologize, yeah, it is a new challenge for all of us, so just let me know if I become muffled again, I'm happy to readjust. Okay, so I was talking about our increase in our Spanish media presence. Did you hear that? Is that okay? Yeah? No, it is not okay?
Increase in Spanish media. Increase in Spanish media.
Okay. Okay, again, I'll do my best. So we are doing a monthly segment and a community affair show called Acción Hispana that airs on Univision weekly. We are also in weekly contact with Telemundo 51, which has a reach all the way down to the Keys. Again, our reach, our main goal is to reach our communities in Lee County, but it's always good to expand our reach, so other communities know what is taking place here.
I think I had my first Telemundo interview in our opening to school, it's the first one that I've ever done, so.
Awesome. Well, there you go. We will also be guests, we're very excited to be guests on the Nations Association's Spanish radio show next week. Reverend Suarez is back, and we're very happy to be a part of that. We know he has quite a reach as well, so we're looking forward to that. And really, what we're, what we go on and talk about is whatever is happening right now, obviously, the reopening our schools, ensuring school safety, and our COVID notification, are topics that are of very much interest right now. We've also, we're also working to have more op-ed pieces more often. We actually recently published something by Dr. Atkins, welcoming the community, that was printed in the news press over the weekend. And Adam Malloy has also written a couple of pieces that have been published in the news press, and we're looking into, hopefully, if there's Spanish publications in the area, we'll be doing that in, as well. We also use our website, we are, you know, continuously telling our, our parents and families that we're always updating our website. We are working to, you know, streamline it, make it a little easier to navigate, but as we do that, we are doing our best to have things on the homepage, such as banners or alerts, that will tell families where the. as banners or alerts, that will tell families where the most important information is. And they are finding it. Our school reintroduction page went live on July 14th, and our analytics as of August 31st show that we've had over 339,000 page views. Our back-to-school page went live August 5th, we've had over 24,000 page views. Reopening plan, July 27th, 13,000 page views, and so forth. We are also working to connect with our website managers at the schools, so that they are also continuously putting out information that is up to date. So we've created a, a list of duties that we hope that they will perform every month, and we're hoping to connect with them later this month. We also have a strong community social reach on social media. We have our Facebook where we get a lot of our engagement, because that's where a lot of our parents are. We also use Instagram and Twitter and YouTube, and all of these platforms have increased in engagement dramatically, especially since the COVID situation, and families are looking for more information regarding reopening our schools. And we've also created, looking at creating more videos in Spanish, so our reopening schools plan video was in English and Spanish. Our mask-wearing video was in English and Spanish, and we're currently producing the three Ws, wear your mask, wash your hands, watch your space, in English and in Spanish, although in Spanish it'll be the three M's, because we couldn't find three Ws in Spanish that worked. But that's just how it goes. And of course, we're doing the grassroots engagement, and Adam, you know, I'll let you take over from here.
Thank you, Irma. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. The red light wasn't on, but that's, that's fine. So, you know, I joined the team two weeks into quarantine, which is a great time for community engagement, but the Irma and the Communications Department have been amazing in this new age of heightened community engagement. Studying the school district's history, it's hard to think of a time in which the community was more actively engaged with our messaging, with our plans, and with our communication, probably not since desegregation in, in the late 1960s. So the Communications Department was all hands on board, and Irma brought me in and helped me kind of navigate the onboarding process in terms of reaching out to the community. I keep track of my monthly and daily logs with community partners, with individuals, and with groups, and they have steadily increased in terms of the number of times we contact, and the outcomes, and the follow-ups, and additional actions. We have prepared a number of presentations in terms of civic community outreach. Just a few are up there, the Lee County Bar Association with Board Member Patrica presenting, Rotary in the Chamber, which Dr. Atkins, two home runs there. We just presented to RISE, the Real Estate Investment Society, actually, today at 12, and received some pretty good feedback from one of our former district employees, Greg Blerton, and then also the Estero, Estero Council of Community Leaders. We have one presentation with the Southwest Florida Hispanic Chamber next week, and we're excited. Irma and I will be working on that event for next week. In terms of faith-based outreach, we have been working hard to develop and brand Faith-Based Adopt a School Initiative in partnership. We really feel like where the missions of faith-based organizations overlap with the school and the community, we can do a great deal of work as it relates to helping provide support for all of our students. We did put up a number of the organizations that we have worked with over the past few week, or sorry, past few months, and they have been fantastic at helping us reach some of our missing voices, which I know has been a big concern of the Board and our district as we tried to communicate as best we could our reopening plans and messaging. I did just kind of give you a very simplistic, maybe overly simplistic graph of our increase in faith-based contacts. This is just my email in person and phone calls to faith-based organizations and leaders. We have had some decent reciprocation from some fairly large faith-based organizations. This was actually modeled off of Orange County, which has a fairly comprehensive faith-based partnership program, and, you know, something that I think, moving forward, in a time to be disruptive, this could be really good for our kids and for our community, and that's something that, once we're able to be a little bit more visible and get out there a little bit more, and as those faith-based organizations open up, that's something that we really want to make sure and ensure that we have our, we have our kids, our community, and our faith-based partnership with the district all in line. Now, in terms of the underserved outreach, you know, working with EDAC, presenting with, with EDAC, and then getting out and trying to get our messaging to different organizations and community coalitions, the Board has been very, you know, they've been very helpful with suggestions and contact information, and that has been so great for, for us in Communications, because I can email and call general contact information, you know, daily, but a lot of times those doors aren't being opened until we have, you know, a community liaison or contact with those particular groups. One of the ones that Irma mentioned was the outreach to the Nations Association charities and Reverend Suarez. This was something that we were very excited about, not, not trying to live up to the, the adage that if you're not, you know, living on the edge or taking up space, but we were definitely trying to push the envelope a little bit in terms of our contact, in terms of our FaceTime, you know, driving out to his office multiple times a week to make sure that he knew that the district cared about his communities and his churches, and it's been, it's been very productive. In fact, today, he called and said, whenever you want to be on the radio, you can be on the radio, and I want to invite you out to an event on Saturday with 50 church leaders, so that you can represent the district. So it's, it's something that we've been pretty proud of. We did have a slight, a slight hiccup in terms of precautions, but now we keep track of how many minutes, wear our mask, wear our distance, the three Ws, so.
I did want to add to that in the outreach in our Hispanic community, specifically in the Veneta area, recognizing the digital divide that sometimes is found in some of those communities. We've, you know, a lot of the information has been translated into Spanish, available on our website, but also, you know, we've actually printed things, and Adam's driven out to Veneta and delivered stacks of, you know, flyers having to do with reopening, having to do with our communications and notification matrix, so that families are informed. So if, if they're not online, you know, we'll, we'll go out to them and we'll provide them with the information. So I want to make sure I added that as well.
No, and just to, to continue with that, I don't know if you saw a little picture flipped around, that was supposed to symbolize kind of chaos in the, in the meeting. There you go. It's there again. We did, we did kind of expand our partnership with Community Cooperative and the United Way, as the district sought to be pretty agile in terms of the expansion of food distribution. You know, I did graduate high school with, with Stephanie Inc. Edwards at Community Cooperative, and she has opened up more food distribution sites at our schools, and we are reciprocating and thanking her by allowing her some temporary storage space of some of her dry food pallets that will be provided at our, at our schools. Also, the United Way, today, you saw the opening of the School Resource Room, but it goes beyond that, continuing to work with them. There's, there's a great opportunity to provide CARES money to our before and after-school kids at our schools, and we're working to develop that partnership with the United Way to be able to do that. So yeah, I just wanted to touch on those two things. All right. Now, in terms of our, our two case studies here, engagement and action, working with Ms. Vaughn and the Board for the mask drive, there she is. We partnered with the community for our school heroes, wear masks. Our estimate is above the 42,000. Ms. Vaughn emailed that there were some more corporate donations that were coming in. My favorite part of the, the mask drive was working with the individuals that handmade hundreds of masks. My mother-in-law is actually the far-right picture. She made, I believe, 200 child and adult masks on there. It was just cool hearing the little stories from the drop-off sites about, you know, people that wanted to support our kids as, as they were going back to a year like no other, and I just, you know, compliments to the Board for your guys' support. The National Pan-Atlantic Council, the Divine Nine of Southwest Florida, just rock stars. They were awesome. I think over 1,600 masks that were donated. The overall, you know, symbol of this community action was to show, yeah, was to show support for our students as they went back to, to school, and we're going to continue kind of the, the mask drive as we move throughout the school year. So that's something that, that we were really excited and, and proud. Now, we've been working really hard with the proximity plan in terms of the development of community stakeholder meetings and groups and reach-outs, even beyond just our collaborative teams that are actually working on the new attendance catchment areas. We are starting next week to combine district and community groups to work on boundaries and, you know, planning public events after that. As you guys are aware, we're working with Davis Demographics to strategically cluster elementary schools into new attendance boundaries, and this is a project that I have a huge passion for, and I'm excited to be a part of the, the team, and making sure that we're, we're building something bigger than ourselves with this one, so I am really happy with that. And thank you too, guys, for the suggestions about community stakeholders to be on those particular groups, and adding them and catching them up as they come in.
And Parent University, we have big plans for this year, and we're really hoping that we can make this happen. We already have a logo, we already have a slogan, advocate, educate, graduate. And our idea for Parent University would be that we would offer monthly sessions for parents to help support their child's education, but also learn about the different programs that are taking place at the district, and it would be like a law, a big kickoff, you know, with the superintendent, talking about what would be offered throughout the year in hopes of having a graduation in the spring. And really, we just want to not just provide them with more information and tools to support their child, but also to be more engaged with the district, to become, I apologize, and to be advocates really for, for everything that's taking place. Maybe you could take over, since they're having trouble hearing me.
So Irma, in her previous, in her previous job, worked with a district that really knocked Parent University, you know, out of the park. This is a way that we can get parents educated about how to best support their kids, how to be active members at their schools, and that's one of the things that we, you know, we really want to see this transition to, is that Parent University creates these agents of parents at each school site about how to be active members in their school. And, you know, you see the, you see the, the kind of macro with the Community Partnership School at Franklin Park, but this is one way that we can really get parents more involved in their schools. So, you know, creating sessions on things like how to best support your kid in Lee Home Connect, I think is, is really important, and a lot of parents would want to be involved with that. We would also like to offer it in Spanish as, as well, upon request. In working with these sessions, I think it'll be, you know, it'll be a great chance for us to create almost like a, a special forces of parents at our schools, and we have a lot of parents that are really involved, but we could always use more, right? The more involvement from our parents connected back to the community in our schools, the better chance we have at, at, at increasing student achievement and student outcomes. You want me to, alright, gotcha. Yeah, sorry. So the theory and action behind our community engagement approach, you know, this new age, new approach, this one school district, one community approach, is that we want to translate, and I, I mentioned it in the last slide, is we want to translate our district approach to school-based engagement, and organizing that and making sure that we are maximizing, you know, our parents as leaders, and this was something that Irma, you know, brought from her previous district, is the idea of PALS, and that was going to be our last session in our Parent University, was now these parents are leaders at their school site, and watch them, you know, watch them get involved and really get to work. So the theory is, is that we build this, we build this approach at the district level, it then translates down at, at the school level. I was fortunate to be in a number of schools which had a lot of parent involvement and a lot of community involvement, and I, I don't think that it, you know, it's too far to say that we can't have that at every single school, because all of our schools are, are schools. There's no reason why one school can't have a dedicated group of, you know, of, of community agents. So we're excited about this, and, you know, obviously, we've been a little bit hampered by, by the quarantine and, and COVID, but we are, we're very dedicated to knocking on as many doors and, and doing the best we can to engage the community.
So as you can tell by our fireworks slide at the end, that we were very excited to present this information to you. I apologize, my mask was not presentation-friendly, but we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. I do have a question, and actually, Adam, I have to tell you, when I'm out in the community, people say, have you met that Adam guy? So people are getting to know you. You keep speaking of Spanish, English and Spanish, but I've never, not once did I hear Creole, which we have a large community of people who speak Creole.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Jordan, we've been working with the Haitian Coalition of Southwest Florida, you know, working, you know, Ms. Vaughn put me in touch with Ms. Beatrice Jaket-Caster, and we've been providing her translated materials in Haitian Creole related to school reopening. I met with her personally a, a number of weeks ago, and she also serves on our community group for student assignment. Unfortunately, she had a few losses in the family, and it's kind of, it disrupted our consistent connection. But yes, you're absolutely right, that we are very interested in, in making sure that we reach out to those, especially those large, you know, Haitian churches that we have in our area, to get that information out. And, you know, we did, we did plan some, some, you know, kind of some public service stuff as well, and we're hoping to, to get Ms. Jaket-Caster a little bit more visible in connection with the school, with the school district.
Okay, thank you, because I know that pastors are really important, especially in Fort Myers for the Haitian community, which there's like 20 churches on one street, so that would be, really be important. And then I know, when you were looking at the churches, or faith-based, I seen, there was one that's on, that works with Dunbar Middle, that's been with them, that adopted them years ago. I did not see them on that, on that list. Next, it's on the same street with Next Level.
Oh, um...
So I, I'll get that name, but I know they work really...
Grace?
Yeah. No, it's not Grace. I'll find it out and I'll let you know, but I know that they have adopted that school for years and have been definitely working with them for shoes, everything. And then the PALS thing, you know, that's the Police Athletic League, just so that you know that.
Oh, yeah, you're saying the, the acronym?
Yes.
Oh, for Parents as Leaders? We, you don't, we, we can't double that up?
I don't know, I think it's going to confuse people, they're going to think it's the Fort Myers PD.
Yeah, we had PALS back in California, Parents with Police Activities League, and we also had Parents as Leaders at the district, and it worked very well.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, yeah. Sorry, Ms. Patrica, I know you had your hand.
Yes, thank you. So I have a couple, well, several questions. Slide three, you said reflected the number of emails and texts delivered. How many, do we keep track of how many of those are opened?
Yes, so we have an average of about 84% emails that are opened.
Okay. And then slide six talked about page views, are those broken out by unique page views, or are they, because I think under back-to-school page, I delivered, I visited that page 24,000 times. So I'm wondering whether that's reflected in that number or not.
Well, thank, thank you for contributing to our amazing analytics. I do not know the answer to that, but I will ask our digital manager, and we'll let you know.
Okay. And then slide seven. So this is district social media, and I think I brought this up last week, a couple weeks ago, whenever it was, the, the lack of uniformity of the use of social media in our schools, you're shaking your head, so you're on it. Gulf Elementary, I think, is a fantastic example. All right, you're on it.
Yeah, yeah, I was, and that was in my notes, but I had a lot of notes, I figured, you know, and it was hard for you to hear me, so I was trying not to read everything. But yes, in addition to what we're doing with the website, we're doing something similar with the schools and their social media managers, and, you know, we are looking at those that are very active and those that are not inactive, and just looking at what they, they all should be doing to at least ensure uniformity. No matter what, you're always going to have schools that are going to be more active than others, but we want to at least have like a minimal of this is the activity and information that you should be sharing, so we're doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, this is a little bit different, or maybe peripheral to the presentation, but Um, and then this is a little bit different, or maybe peripheral to the presentation, but maybe Dr. Atkins can get us an update at some point in the future. Where do we stand on the use of Language Line for, um, families that don't speak English? If you have a question at the school, or you have an IEP meeting, or you have something where the parents and the family speak a different language, Language Line is 24-hour interpretation services in 250-ish plus languages?
If you can, if not, I can bring them an update later.
Absolutely. Uh, so, very specific to your question, I mean, that has been briefed through the chiefs and through the superintendent's cabinet, and now it's part of the budget process.
Great, awesome. We're moving on it, that's, that's really all I needed. Um, and again, peripheral to this, but sort of on the same, um, topic is, an interpreter available for board meetings? We ran into a situation recently where we had several Spanish-speaking, um, public commenters. Do we have a solution for that?
Um, I think Dr. Spiral did have some information on that as well, but I also said that I, I'm available, I'm here at all the board meetings. And actually, that board meeting, I was here, but I thought they brought their own translator, so I didn't come out, I didn't want, you know. So, so that was the reason, but I'm always here and available for Spanish. I don't know about anything else, and I don't know if you had anything else.
And to, um, Ms. Jordan's point, we do have a large population of Haitian Creole-speaking, so if we had that, if we had a, a bunch of public speakers come forward and they spoke Haitian Creole, then we might run into the same issue. Um, and I'm not suggesting that we have a staff member here all the time, but that we have a process, um, where we can address that. I'm, I don't mean to put you on the spot with this, I'm just raising issues as they come up with the presentation. Mr. Malloy, I owe you some masks, they are in the back of my car, I did pick them up for you. Um, so, Ms. Vaughn, you're even closer to that 50,000 with the Astero and southern part of the county, um, included. Um, Parent University, if you were to ask me to do one more thing right now as a parent, I would probably lose my mind, so how are, no, not, and, and I don't mean that as a criticism, I just mean that as, you know, we're all trying to participate and trying to do a lot to make the opening of schools go smoothly. How are you going to incentivize me to participate in this university?
So, so part of everything that's been going on is why we didn't jump on it immediately because, you know, if, if it had been up to us, we would have been doing it already, but of course, there's so much going on. So, part of what, uh, we're doing as we're developing the plan for the information that would be shared, is having classes that provide information that parents would want to know now. So, as, uh, Adam mentioned, if we had something that could provide information to families as how they can support their child at home, if they're doing Lee Home Connect or Lee Virtual, giving them the tools to support them, what is it that parents can use now? And providing them with those types of top, topics that would, they would want to know more, more about is how we would entice them.
Ms. Patrica, too, uh, to your question, uh, we thought that this would, this might be the best time, well, not to overwhelm, but to maximize the heightened engagement that we have with parents, especially parents that we might not have heightened engage, engagement with, uh, in previous times. Uh, we did, like Irma mentioned, we did schedule out a number of things that we're, we're going to be very flexible with and, you know, virtual with, um, to try to, uh, you know, maximize that connection that we have now, but then also be understanding, um, you know, with parent, with parents' needs. Uh, I guess the general idea is that we would just really want to help them, uh, you know, with some of their concern, and perhaps some of these sessions could really alleviate some of the questions and concerns that they have, uh, about whatever the, the topic is.
Okay. Alright.
And the, and the other thing, just along the same lines here, um, you know, this was one of the, kind of the, a similar concept to what I think our East Lee County Cooperative is exploring in terms of engagement of parents. What we're finding is that while we believe as, as educators that our doors are open, sometimes that's not the perception that we see out there in the broader community. Uh, and I think that some of these efforts, like, you know, Parent University, I think, demonstrate that, that, that unlike maybe you're perceiving that we're closed to you, we actually need you and want you to be active participants in your child's education. So, um, I think it will go a long way to encourage more people to become involved. I mean, if you think about, you know, I think your personal example, what you do, you started out becoming involved in your child's school, right, through SAC, or I believe, and, and that type of involvement, I think, is important. At, at schools that I've, you know, been a honor to be a part of, I was really surprised at the differences among them as it related to parent involvement and the, and the two schools where the parents were very involved. Um, I think that the whole communication between the school and, and the parents and the community is just much, much richer at those two schools than, than this, this, uh, last school that I was a part of where there was almost no involvement. And ironically, the perception there, um, and that was a school that was in the West Zone, where you, the perception is there's a lot of involvement, and quite the opposite is where I had the least amount of involvement, was in a, a West Zone Cape Coral school versus an island school versus, you know, Paul Morris Dunbar Middle. So, um, I just think these types of concepts, uh, go a long way to, to helping, encourage people to become active participants who may not feel that they are, they would normally be welcome in that school.
Right. Good, I just, I have two more quick. Um, thank you for that. I, I do, um, it's, it's going to be really hard, like, I can't put any more hours in my day, so if you send me a Parent University notification, I hear you. If you're addressing something that my kids are going through, I'm more likely to engage. It's just, it's a tough time. Mr. Malloy, you are very well-received by the community, very, very well-received by the community. You're energetic, um, intelligent, well-spoken, and funny, and the community really likes that. So, um, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the work you've been doing. My final suggestion would be, um, groups, um, in gated communities that like to be charitable, have adopted some schools as well, and we might want to scale that up to include more of those gated communities. I've got a fantastic example that I'll share with you out of Lexington Country Club. Um, they've adopted, I can't tell you the name of the school, but they do bikes based on the number of reads that kids have, and, um, they, they really engage with the kids, bring them on field trips and provide meals and all sorts of stuff, so I'll give you that example.
Oh, the Harnes Marsh schools.
Think about scaling that up as well.
Is it Middle or Harnes Marsh? Harnes Marsh Elementary, okay.
Thank you. Ms., um, Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yes, um, first, thank you, Ms., Ms. Jordan, for mentioning the Haitian community. I'm sure you knew it was on, on my list, and it makes.
I live with them, in my community.
I don't live with them, but I spend a lot of time working on projects and I'm on their board, but, um, the, the unique thing about the Haitian community is that it's, um, invisible in that when, um, you look at the demographics, like, for the testing, usually they're listed under black, and they're very, very different cultures. I mean, there's some others, some island cultures that, that are also different, and they're unique from African-Americans, un, unless it's somebody who truly has just come here from a country in Africa, uh, in that there is, um, the ASAL component, component as well. So, I'm really glad you met with my friend Beatrice, because she's, she's a mover and a shaker. Regarding the Parent University, um, a few things that, that come to mind. First of all, this meshes very well with our proximity plan, because it's been my experience, having taught for 24 years before moving here, in a district where you had feeder schools and community schools, that's where you really get the involvement. And I'm, I'm betting that some of the ones that have been, we've been talking about, for instance, Sanibel School is, is a great example, because that's a contained area, and, and they are superb supporters. And, and some of the other schools that have been around longer, I know, like Franklin Park and, and some of the others, they have a culture of that, which I, I think some of our schools haven't really developed yet. Um, I think something that's a need, maybe I missed in, in what you said, for examples of parents getting more involved, I think there are a lot of parents that don't understand what services are available for their children. Um, and enough said on that, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying, and, and I think we have a lot of, of parents that, because they don't know, um, that, you know, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of maybe many adult education classes for parents. Did you have any idea of where you would be holding the sessions? Would they, they be face-to-face, or would you have them on Facebook Live?
Yeah, so we had, uh, tentatively scheduled all the ones for 2020, um, virtually, uh, and we, we didn't, we hadn't decided yet on a, on a platform, as this was just an idea that we wanted to share with you guys as we were moving forward. Uh, but yes, the, the 2021s were virtual, but after that, we would like to strategically select sites, uh, in collaboration with, with the board and, and district leadership.
And sharing information.
So, you already have scheduled all of those and made up the topics and?
So, yeah.
We have a draft, but we haven't published any information or any, because of, you know, our current situation, we have some goals, but we are kind of looking and, uh, and, and, you know, weighing things and seeing if, if we are ready to do it come this fall.
Yeah, well, and, and, and I think there are a lot of parents that are, would want to know things like even, um, ones that are directed specifically at, um, let's say, English language learners, um, reading, for instance, and, you know, educational things. And it's also been my experience that, once we start doing things in, more face-to-face, what attracts people? Free stuff and food. So, and a lot of cultures, that's the whole thing, gravitating around food and celebration and that sort of thing. And also, uh, it seems to me that I saw, I think it's Fox Four, is starting a book drive. I, I just saw that today, and, um, you know, for instance, partnering with places like Fox Four or other organizations and, and businesses that have book drives and, um, you know, sponsoring something like that. And, and the final question about this, and I have two other things, how does this sort plant, is it, does it take away from the PTOs at the schools, or how does it, does it mesh with those? Do we have, I don't, I don't know, because.
Sorry, Ms. Vaughn, we were hoping that it would, um, it would energ, it would energize them, uh, continue to energize and expand, uh, what they already have in terms of a fr, a parent engagement framework.
Okay, so, if, if you have a school with a very strong PTO that wouldn't, um, undermine that group, it would work in conjunction with that group, or how?
Yeah, no, not, not competing West Side Story, uh, parent groups, um, but just, uh, to try, to try to provide as much information as we can so that they can continue, uh, expanding their involvement at the school, uh, through both Parent University information and sessions and also, um, PTOs.
Okay, and I'm glad you did mention school websites, and, um, since I've been doing, um, scholarships for the Haitian group for, for, going on five years now, um, that's, um, just for an example, I got the information out, it was, it was pushed out, I think Lori Brooks pushed it out for me each year to the different schools, and then just for, just to see, I've sometimes gone around to a bunch of the different high schools, and there's, there it is advertised on School A, but there's almost nothing in School B for scholarships. So, I know this is, this goes into another department, but, um, I'm hoping there could be a coordinator for all the scholarships. And I know when I first brought it up, it was said to me, um, well, some of them are specific to a particular town or something, but that doesn't make a big deal, you just put only for residents of Alva, or, or whatever. So, um, and, and I know there are other areas, but the one that I've been directly involved with is advertisement of, of scholarships. Um, I don't think we have that on our website, do we? Anywhere? For the district as a whole?
I, I don't know the website inside and out quite yet, but, um, I, I would bet that it is available somewhere.
And I think that would be an excellent, excellent resource for all the parents and, and students, and I know, you know, there are the counselors at the schools and, and all of that, but, uh, people start looking for those things early on, just to see. And my final is, um, how are the school board members selected to present at the various civic groups? I heard you mention, um, you know, Mrs. Patrica, um, I mean, I haven't been called on to help out with that, and I don't know about the other board members, maybe they have and maybe they haven't, but, um, I know when we did the, um, the town halls, which were not very successful with turnout, we rotated, um, so how, how is that being done?
Vaughn, that was, uh, let me clarify just on that, that was, um, a presentation that she had already had established, and we just worked in collaboration with creating the presentation, so, she had already.
But, but that doesn't matter, I mean, I could have, I have a presentation on, um, that needs a little updating on Haitian students in the schools and graduation rates and et cetera.
Yeah, I would love to.
Nobody said, hey.
Yeah, we would.
I'm, I'm just curious how, because out of fairness.
I was invited, I was invited directly, I was invited directly by several Rotary Clubs as well, it's just a matter of people in the community knowing me and asking me to come in.
Okay, well, thank you for answering, I was talking to Mr. Malloy, but, um.
So, Ms. Vaughn, yeah.
I'm just wondering, because we used to have a rotating basis, and I understand that those board members that have pre-existing relationships with groups might be asked, and, and, and that's fine, but, um, this is in the presentation, and I'm just wondering how, moving forward.
Yeah, moving forward, we, uh, our, our department.
How we're going to do that, or maybe it's something, Ms. Fisher, something that we need to talk about as, as a board.
So, ju, just to further clarify, that, that was in the presentation, because we were aware of, of a presentation that, that Ms. Patrica had made, and she asked for assistance on some information. It isn't necessarily something that's coming out of communications where we're putting together a calendar and board, and inviting board members. Uh, so, you know, if, if at any time you, you're giving a presentation where you need information, uh, we're, we're certainly happy to help with that.
No, but, I mean, I'm really happy that Mr. Malloy has been so well-received in the community, but it might behoove us as, as a district to bring in some of the school board members and, uh, kind of humanize us, so to speak, um, in, in the community as, as well. So, um, that's just something, um, that I noticed was kind of missing in, in all of this community outreach, how exactly board members will, will figure in what we can do to help on, you know, in part, a rotational basis.
And it's, um, you know, maybe something, just to bring it back, not to Parent University, but, you know, you know, maybe perhaps partnering, like you mentioned, for a particular, like, learning session. Um, we do have a, like, kind of like the draft topics, uh, you know, starting off pretty, you know, important with Lee Home Connect, but by January, we wanted to do a Now We Are Cooking type of session, which brought in a lot of nut, nutritional, and we wanted to partner, uh, with perhaps a community group that could help cook, and that would be awesome if we could have a rotational basis with board members being involved, uh, with any of our events, but, yeah.
Okay, these are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Um, I love, I love the idea of theory in action, um, but with respect to a couple of things, um, the Parent University, uh, website management, um, my sense is that, hmm, how can I say this? So, I consider community engagement a principal's responsibility. That is not necessarily what all principals think their responsibility is. And so, as you talk about pushing down, you know, from the district level down to the school level, how are you going to get principals who are not comfortable doing this? how are you going to get principals who are not comfortable doing this or unwilling to do it to participate to be effective? That's, that's, that's a big concern. Now, my other concern with respect to principals is this website management. It seems to me that principals should be overseeing their website, and they should know what the criteria are, and they should, because they're, we're paying for people to do the work, and if they're not doing the work, that's an issue. So I am concerned about that gap between the district and the parents and who's doing what at the school level. So that's one comment. I assume, based on what Ms. Vaughn was saying, that we're working towards a speakers bureau at some point, and that we will invite people to apply for a board member to speak at some point, and that there will be a rotational basis. My one comment would be that I think the best place for the board to start in terms of communication is this proximity plan, doing pretty much the same thing that was done with the sales tax, where there is one presentation, and every board member knows exactly what it is that they need to present to the community. And I think that would be a great way to start. I'm glad that you're doing the faith, you're working towards the Orange County model. It's really impressive what they're doing, and I get that you have to start at the ground level and build towards that, but I think that's terrific. How are you, do you have an inventory of school and district partners? And let me give you an example, so today we had the United Way with the Closet. But we also have Laces of Love that's doing an enormous amount of work around the district, and we have groups like the Bridge Fund who are doing the same thing. So how do we not have these small groups feel like, oh, all of a sudden, the big groups come in and taken away something that they have a lot of pride in and commitment to? So there's that. And also an inventory because, you know, Lowe's and Home Depot, places like that, have done things for some schools, but not for all schools, because not all schools are aware of that. These people are willing to work with schools, provide the funding, provide the labor, whatever. So I would, I would love to see some sort of inventory ultimately. Gated communities, Ms. Patrica mentioned gated communities. It's not just money. It turns out in my community, there are a lot of retired schoolteachers. They would love nothing more to go, than to go in the schools. But we have to have a way, I guess, to vet them, so that's an issue. But I also know that in my community, at one time, there were a group of men who own boats and who took kids out from Benita Elementary on the water for field trips. And that had to be canceled because they didn't have some sort of clearance. So again, it was sort of bogged down because we didn't have the staff or the process at the district level. So I think there's a lot of energy, pent up energy, and particularly given the tax situation, if we can get people invested in kids, selling some of this tax stuff gets a lot easier because they have a personal relationship with kids. I hope you're going to hit all the rotaries and chambers. Yeah, those are my comments. Thank you for the, I know I'm throwing a lot at you, and I know in an 18-month or 24-month period, you probably will be getting at some of these things, but I just, I've been waiting for eight years to have somebody ready to do this work. So I'm just really excited that you're taking it on, and I just want to give you the things that I've been thinking about, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kitten, please.
Okay, in psychology, there's a concept called locus of control. And the Webster definition is a psychological concept that refers to how strongly people believe they have control over their situations and experiences that affect their lives. And I gave the definition because as I use it, I hope, you know, you're understanding. I have been involved with DAC and SAC for years. It has always been the issue of how do we increase that? I, along with a couple of my colleagues here, feel that I see the district as a conduit, as a trainer, as a teacher, as an empowerment, but to give the locus of control to the schools. One of the, and thank you, Dr. Atkins, for mentioning the East Lee Education Co-op. One of the main things that we talk about is creating a sense of community in our schools where it does not exist. So that is our goal. I see the district as a conduit to that, to help give these statements or these tools to the local schools, because the parents, and especially depending on their socioeconomic status, are not going to trust somebody way up here in downtown, quote unquote. They are going to listen to and learn from, first of all, the people that have their children in their hands for seven and a half hours a day. So I love the concept of parent university and all of that, and I know it sounds like, okay, we're putting work on the schools, but I think there's enough willing and capable people in our school settings that would love to be a part of something like this in their school setting. And it doesn't always have to be the AP or the person that's working towards moving up or whatever. It could be a teacher that has been there forever, and all they want to do is teach and help their community. And I think we would be missing a major goal if we don't look at it that way. And if we don't look at how do we find those people that are willing to do that and want to do that, and that are not in the limelight right now? How do we surface them? How do we get those people that are worker bees that want to work in their school, in their community, to make this work? So, yeah, my question was, was really about the DAC and SAC as well. I mean, that's been, for years, how do we improve DAC and SAC? But if we're taking the focus over here and making it the districts instead of the district helping them create that community focus, then we have to work on that. I hope that you understand, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay, so actually, I also think that I'm excited about this community engagement piece as well. That was actually part of my, my part of the mission and vision. So I, we, over the summer, we zoomed with Lee Health. So part of my vision is to have more businesses involved like Lee Health. And, you know, we are Lee, I think that all Lee County businesses should be involved in our future, and these are, their children are our future, right? So I love the fact that this is an important piece for the district and the community. So I know that there's a proposal from Lee Health right now, what's the status on that? I'd love to be more involved in that. I've been a blood donor for all my life, since I was old enough to do that. So I think that it's really important that we are working with our local businesses for support in what we do and support what they do. I think that that piece is a very valuable piece for our students. Thanks.
Ms. Giovinelli, just to update on the Lee Health, we're hoping to have word on their updated proposal for their blood drive schedule today, hopefully. You know, it's being, it's being reviewed again in terms of their health, health and safety guidelines as it relates to our reopening schools procedure and toolkit. So we're hoping to have that information, the approval today. And I have been in regular contact with Lee Health, not every day, but every other day, probably.
Yeah, okay, great. So, I mean, see, I think it's really important that we engage our students as well, just as we want to engage our community. So I think that that piece would be really good, because, I mean, how do we expect our community to be involved in us, and if we don't start our children to be involved in the community? So I think it's just a piece that will be very cohesive for all of us, so, and then for the future, you know? Because, I mean, I just read an article where my daughter is going to school that they are going to do away with having, you know, in guidelines and accepting students in colleges, they're not, they're not going to, they don't have to do SATs and ACTs. They want, they want, you know, students involved in their community. That piece is more valuable, they want well-rounded students. So I think they're looking at that, and so, at universities, so I think something we can start now. And so that's, I think that's why that's important, so thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have anything?
Not right now, I'm enjoying everyone else's comments, I've been years for these.
Ms. Patrica?
Just as the discussion surrounding the parent university evolved, and I learned more about what, how, what my colleagues think, it's something that's a little bit more exciting to me, because PTO can be intimidating. I remember when I first moved here and was approached about PTO, it was intimidating, because it's a group of people that generally already knows each other, and when you're the newcomer coming in, it can be intimidating. So I can see parent university as a way of enhancing that involvement at the school level and helping people overcome that intimidation. So I have a better understanding of it now, good job, keep it up.
Ms. Kitten?
I just want to echo something that Ms. Giovinelli said about students. And just to put it in perspective, when I started teaching in Lee County School District, I started high, teaching in high school. And a lot of my students now, and I'm sure others can say this, are in our community. And when you go to the schools, they're the parents that are bringing their kids to school. So very much in line of what she said, we do have to involve the students so they know that when they become a part of the community, that they can give back, and that's how we keep community going, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, as I've listened to other, my colleagues' comments, I just wanted to say that I really agree with what Ms. Kitten said and what Ms. Morgan said, that it really seems like we're kind of reinventing the wheel to push down from the district into the schools, because when parents see communications, what communication are they more likely to open and be really interested in? That is from their school. And they're probably more likely to, when they want, they have questions about the dress code at their school, let's say, go to their own school's website. So I like the idea, I think, Ms. Morgan, you said something about tools and, honestly, we, we need to get, you know, I've said this many times in different scenarios about our principals. I understand totally different demographics, different populations. There's, there's a level of uniqueness about each school, but it troubles me, academically, it troubles me on these issues, when I peruse websites, for instance, like I referred to, and one of them is wonderful, and the next one has very little of value and just refers back to us. And again, as I said earlier, I think the proximity plan is going to push this out, and that should be a real big selling point as we go out, and hopefully all of us board members will have a share in that as we go out. And, you know, let, let everybody know, if they can't already figure it out, how much more community involvement and, you know, I'm seeing more wraparound services, more true community schools, not just a neighborhood school, since we're not really going for that, but true community schools. And there's where you can differentiate depending upon the needs of the school community. So you've done a lot of work on it, there's a lot that's gone into it. But if I'm listening correctly, I think I'm hearing that we have the greatest faith in school up with us facilitating whatever they need, but to really place it in the hands of the schools, the principals, and as you, Ms. Kitten, said about somebody in the school, it doesn't have to be an assistant principal, let it be a supplementary position. And anyway, that's, I just wanted to comment on what I heard as this discussion evolved.
Just to speak on that, you know, when I joined, I was kind of on boarded about a school development resource lead, that they were starting to get that program going right before quarantine happened. And now I just met, I think, a few weeks ago with Kaylee Rodden, her team on that to organize what's happening at the school level. But, you know, to Irma and I, when we thought about this idea, it was always about what Ms. Kitten's mentioned, which was about being a conduit, you know, and understanding our locus of control. For 12 years at North, I understood that everything that was going to happen was going to be from the, from the school out. And so, you know, designing this was never about top down, it was about formatting it alongside. And I think that that, that's something that, you know, a conduit was probably a great word to describe the framework of the, of the program.
Thank you. I know that Ms. Giovinelli has one more thing to say?
Yeah, just actually, real quick, too, on, on the Lee Health piece, I know they do a scholarship. And so in listening to some of my fellow board members talking about the principals, they actually have it engaged in participation to gain those scholarships. I know East Lee has, was very involved to get some of that scholarship money back at the school. So the, you know, they, Lee Health has an excellent program that could, that actually directly gives revenue back to the school. So I think it's really important for that engagement piece. I believe it's just a missed opportunity for the schools itself. And also to teaching that piece of engagement for the students back to helping the community by giving blood and so forth. So I think it's, I think it's vital that we work with, you know, our, like, our business, you know, people like this, you know, Lee Health. And I know there's got to be others that would, that would be doing something similar, you know, so thank you.
Okay, and I want to say thank you very much for putting this on, and just, Life Church is the church I was speaking of. That's the one on Plantation, they're engaged with several schools. And, and what Ms. Vaughn had said about the, the websites of the schools, that's how we chose the schools for our kids, just to tell you. Because when you're reading that, you're looking at the culture of the schools, and the ones that were more engaged with the families, that's how we chose the schools for our kids. So that's vitally important, and the schools are, you know, they're the out, I mean, we need to make sure that they're engaged with us. So thank you very much for all the work that you've put in, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have academic services coming up.
Good afternoon, board members, my name is Jose Cuevas. I'm here to present for you the uniform testing calendar. From academic services, Dr. Spiro is the chief. The uniform testing calendar is a Florida statute requirement that has to be posted on our website by October. on our website by October 1st. And so, we're, we're here to present that to you so that we can hopefully get it approved and post it up on the website by October 1st. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
The, the uniform testing calendar has to be posted, um, out on the website for community employees, parents, and everyone else to be able to see, uh, how we're engaging students in testing. There are six components to the uniform testing calendar. There's a glossary of assessment terms. As you know, in education, we love our acronyms. And so, there's a glossary of assessments, terms. Um, the second part is the test type and purpose, um, or you, purpose slash use of the test. Third segment is required state assessments. Those are required by the state. Fourth is our statewide assessments for selected students. Fifth is our district required assessment information. And finally, we have our estimates of total time tested by grade level. Now, this year is a unique year. Um, usually, by May 1st, we have the third-grade writing tests done. And then by May 1st, we have the rest of the FSA testing. But because we start at school later and we're ending school later, there's also a legislative requirement that says that you can't test, uh, prior to four weeks before the end of the year. Well, if we back up four weeks before the end of the year, we end up somewhere around , uh, May 24th. So, it doesn't fit either one of those dates. Now, the DOE is fully aware of this, and we're not the only district that has this, uh, situation. And so, we're waiting on the DOE to give us some guidance on how to do this. And the reason why we just can't just test when we, when we want is a lot of the testing dates and times are, are governed by legislator. Uh, so, we, they can't change it, we can't change it. So, they need to do something on their end to make a convenience or, or, uh, change at the, at their level in order to, to deal, um, with this change this year. The district required assessments that we have are STAR, reading and math, I Ready, reading and math. We have, uh, monitoring assessments for science and social studies for, uh, the state-tested grades. For example, when we say science, I mean, fifth-grade science, eighth-grade science. Um, in social studies, we're talking civics and U.S. history. I Ready is used by seven of the Big Ten school districts. And so, we have transitioned our way from STAR to I Ready. There still are five schools, elementary schools, that are still using STAR for K through five. Uh, but hopefully, next year, all, all schools will be on, uh, I Ready. And the main difference between, uh, STAR and I Ready, or one of the main differences, is that I Ready not only diagnoses where a student is, but I Ready also, um, sets a personalized learning path for each student. Um, so as long as they stay in the platform and they continue working in the platform, the platform is designed to help them get to the next level. Then you have our formative assessments. Brief assessments provided to teach, uh, for teachers, allowing insight into student learning on the Florida standards. And then we have our fluency checks, that's primarily done in kindergarten and first grade. Uh, fluency checks are meant to be quick checks. And, uh, I, I have post-secondary readiness tests up here. Um, we actually are not, like, using it district-wide, so to speak, but we are using it for three courses as a final exam, as long as the teacher evaluation committee approves it. Now, the teacher evaluation committee hasn't met yet to approve it. And so, once they do, then we'll be able to change that from "to be determined" and actually put a date there. But we're looking at using the, for a final exam for math, uh, for liberal arts one, math for liberal arts two, and math for college readiness. Also, uh, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. The last page of the uniform testing calendar lists by minute how much time is spent, uh, testing. Um, so, last year, there was 10,648 total minutes used, uh, in testing. This year, there's 12,442 minutes. And so, we're up 1,794 minutes, which is approximately, um, well, it's not approximately, that's exactly what it is. So, the reason for that is that the I Ready assessment in kindergarten, we have three 45-minute sessions for ELA, three 45-minute sections for math, whereas STAR is, uh, 60-minute sessions, but only one. And so, then for grades one through eight, it's two 45-minute sections for ELA and two for math. So, we, we added a little bit of time there, and so, it did go up, but it's, it's almost entirely tied to the transition from STAR to I Ready. So, the next step is to have it board-approved, and then to be able to post it after it's approved to the district website, and finally, to submit it to the DOE, um, of course, after approval. Are there any questions?
Ms. Gittens, please.
First of all, not a question, but a kudo. Um, where, where is Mr. Savage? He's back there. Thanks to Mr. Savage, I am, uh, keenly aware of I Ready and helping him do that at, at school. Thank you so much for that education. But it's a, it really is a great program, and it allows students to, um, to kind of self-drive, to be self-driven. And, um, the kids really like it. I mean, it, there's, there's all kinds of fun things and cartoons and games and all types of things like that that students really gravitate to. So, I, I applaud you for using that. Um, the question about, you said there's five schools, elementaries, that are not using it. And when are they expected to come on board with everybody else? Do we know that?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
In the, in the next?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yes, next school year.
So, we will have five schools then that are still on STAR?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. And I'll ask the questions about that later. Um, how do, I mean, when we're talking about these assessments, I know we have to get out in front of it and schedule, even though it's kind of a, a theoretical right now, we don't know what's going on. Is DOE saying this is the hard, fast testing, and they're going ahead with the planning, even not knowing what we're going to do? Because how do we know that students are ready for that, especially when we haven't assessed whatever the achievement gap might be from March to now?
That, that is a great question. And you, you answered your own question, and that is, the DOE is going forward, and they are testing. Um, and they're not changing their dates, of course, except for that legislative end-of-the-year situation where some of the schools are ending school later. Other than that, they're full steam ahead with testing.
So, is that something that we as a board need to, you know, raise a flag with? Because I, I'm just concerned basically that we have a student that has, is not up to par, not because of any reason of their own, and then we're still going to test them. And they're not, it, it's going to make everything lower if they are not prepared. So, is that something that we as a, a team need to add to our legislative piece? Or to say, wait a minute, hold on, I know we have to put it on the calendar, but how hard and fast is it? Our kiddos may not be ready.
Uh, again, another great question that I'm not really sure I can answer. Dr. Spiro, would you like to answer that?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gittens, that would really be for the board to decide, you know, if that's something you'd like to have on your platform. Certainly, we, um,
Do you see?
There was no school grade, and if there was no assessment during this pandemic year, I think that'd be wonderful for children so that we could focus on making sure that they are comfortable in their model, and they can focus on what learning style that's in front of them. Um, so, I mean, in an ideal world, I think that'd be phenomenal. But with where we are today, with what DOE is saying to us, they're saying, this, this is where the testing window is. This is what we're expecting from you. From the language that I've heard, uh, from DOE, I personally don't see them lightening up on that. I think they have been very hard and fast, that they're going to be prog, aggressively progress monitoring to make sure, making sure that districts are making sure they're dip-stipping, dip-stipping learning along the way. Um, so, from what I'm hearing, I have not heard any type of language that would loosen that up. And I know Dr. Atkins and the superintendent's group, I think your group has echoed, uh, those same comments.
And have we not, um, I mean, when do we expect to have, you know, our dipstick approach to these kids that have just come back and just started? When will we know how, how far back they are? I mean, you hear, you know, months or whatever, but when, when will we be able to assess that?
So, our first, our first progress monitoring window is going to be coming up here, and that'll give us a good indicator of where the kids were third quarter to where they are now. And that'll take a little analysis from Mr. Cuevas and his team, uh, once that progress monitoring done is really to say, here's what his analysis, you know, states.
And, and the question that parents have, have posed is, if we're still in distance learning, how do we do assessment?
So, you'd like, how are we doing assessments for Lee Home Connect Kids? And so, I'm gonna, I don't know if Mr. Cuevas was going to talk about that, or Ms. Stout?
Stout.
Ms. Stout, if you want to be, Ms. Stout's been leading that with us. This is Chrissy. She's one of our coordinators, and she's been working directly with our executive directors and our school principals to talk about this task of how we are going to continue to test students that are via Lee Home Connect.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go, but questions came up, so.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, for progress monitoring, we are still testing our Lee Home Connect students because we think it's very important to know where they are at in the academic progress, or process, excuse me. We are asking the students to have their web cameras on while they test, just as a teacher would walk the room and monitor students. This will allow the teacher to monitor the students at home as well, so that we're sure that the test is valid for our students. And then, we are also using a program called Light Speed so that we can check their internet history, because the test isn't meant to be a gotcha, but to make sure that we have valid results for the students and that we can accurately adjust instruction accordingly. The state is not allowing us to make any changes for the, I'm sorry, to administer the state testing virtually. So, we are, uh, working right now for our secondary schools to make sure that we have transportation provided to those students so that they all have equitable access to the test. And we are inviting them in with an understanding of how these assessments could impact them if they choose to wait until another point in time to test.
And one last part with that then is, you mentioned Home Connect testing and, uh, students being monitored and all of that. Um, in the hybrid classes where the teachers have more, you know, Home Connect and all, is there a way that we can, for testing, split that up? So, if a teacher is testing Home Connect, they have full attention. And we brought up at, uh, I think, the last meeting about having so many students that you cannot see them all at the same time. So, those two things would play into having testing with Home Connect. And thank you for your answer.
And I apologize. What was your, what was your name again, please?
Chrissy Stout.
Thank you, Stout, okay.
Thank you.
So, to answer that question, if you don't mind, um, we are encouraging the schools to utilize, almost like elementary centers, where the teacher could have part of, like, their in-person class, working on an independent activity, so that they could then monitor the Lee Home Connect students with their progress monitoring. And then they could flip-flop that, which would also then give their Lee Home Connect students a slight break from the screen to work independently. We're encouraging the test coordinators and others at the school to assist with things like small group and one-on-one testing per IEPs and 504s, which would also then allow the teacher to focus on a smaller group of students directly in them, or, I'm sorry, in front of them, as opposed to trying to manage multiple things going on in the room at the same time.
Yeah, because that is important. I remember when I taught fourth grade and even doing centers, and you've got, you know, they're engaged to an extent, but when you're talking about a test group online and two groups that are live, that's going to be very difficult for teachers to manage.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Gittens. I, I personally do think that's an important part of our legislative platform. I don't think the DOE is going to move on these testing requirements or the, um, uh, outcomes or impacts associated with them to students and teachers. Um, the indication that I received is that because we have time, and, and these are laws that require the stakes associated with the test, because we have time to talk to our legislators, the change needs to take place there instead of inside the DOE. So, I'm curious as to when we, as a board, will be having a workshop on our legislative platform, number one. Um, number two, the feedback that I'm getting from teachers is concern about some of the things you just said. I can't see kids on Lee Home Connect. And at the same time, the face-to-face, you, Dr. Atkins has said many times, so many of the innovative things that we've been doing to get kids working together in groups and not that, you know, row after row after row of kids just sitting forward and being lectured at by a teacher, that has had to disappear from face-to-face for obvious reasons. So, the quality of education is going to be impacted, whether it's face-to-face, Lee Home Connect. Um, and I have said to teachers, you're not getting pressure from me as a board member to produce certain results at the end of the year on a test. I'm only one of seven. I, I can't speak for all of us, but in my conversations with Dr. Atkins, I've gotten the same sense from him. There, there's no pressure here from me or from your superintendent to, to get a certain score on the test for your kids at the end of the year. Um, and in term, and then their very next question to me is, well, what about the FSA? And what about my pay? And what about my, and I say, that's where you need to trust me as a board member, to go to Tallahassee and to advocate on your behalf and make sure, Dr. Spiro said, just this year, I would, I would suggest that we need at least two years of, um, of testing without stakes associated with it for our teachers and our students in order to get back to where we need to be after the shutdown and the strangeness of this school year. So, I, I say all of that to urge us to get together as a group and put that legislative platform together, because we need to be contacting our legislators now. Today, we need to be having lunch with them and discussing the tremendous negative impact on our kids and our teachers as we're reopening schools. Those are my comments.
Can we please add that to the list or agenda?
Yes, I have it down.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, please?
A little different direction on, on this. Uh, I've been looking at the district windows and, uh, testing season, so to speak, when a lot of stuff shuts down. Um, I realize this is statewide assessment, but as you get into the May tests, you also have, very important for our district, AP, ACE, and IB testing. And that just adds more pieces to the testing puzzle. Have those advanced courses set their testing dates yet?
Those organizations have set their testing dates, which is why at the high school level, we try to give them as much flexibility as possible, because the needs of every school is different in regards to those programs. So, uh, we give them that flexibility so that they can work to meet the needs of their students and their building around those.
Right, okay. So, will those appear on the same calendar, even though they're not state tests, just to?
We don't usually add them on the calendar because it's not part of, like, district-required progress monitoring.
But will there be a separate, well, I guess each, well, each school should have a posting as, as well. And probably, the teachers that are involved will in, embed those dates in, in their kids' minds. The other thing, just, I'm sure you all know this, but it's sometimes just getting the pieces together. Hopefully, in those March dates, none of them are selected for the day, the first day back from spring break.
So, the first day back from spring break, I don't believe we have testing right after that.
Yeah.
The concern is the FSA writing window that comes later, the first of April, if the DOE doesn't find the flexibility within the legislation to move it. Because the first day after the Easter break is usually coinciding with grade-three reading and FSA writing.
Okay. And I, I remember that from my high Okay, and I, I remember that from my high, high school teaching days. That is just not a good time for the kids to be testing. So obviously, educators are aware of that, but I was just hoping that wasn't going to occur.
Where we're allowed to with computer-based, we do give them the flexibility, which is usually, they need to offer testing the first week, and can use the second week for makeups as needed. But for paper-based, DOE does require us to choose specific dates. So we try to work with our schools, but typically, our choice is Monday or Tuesday, and our district often takes off that Monday following Easter.
Okay, and I think you touched on this, but the kids that are typically for these tests, and especially the ESOL kids and ESE that are in special rooms, I, I think you touched on this, but would you review what will be done for those, those kids?
Absolutely. So the test coordinators are trained to review the IEPs 504 plans, as well as the ESOL status of all of our students. And then they create groups accordingly to make sure that the students receive any accommodations that are allowable on the FSA. So since you mentioned our ESOL learners, that would include extended time up to one full day for every test session, the use of a word-to-word translation-only dictionary, no pictures, limited translation is available, et cetera. And they are all extensively trained on those accommodations as to what's allowed on FSA.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, because I, I know about the different accommodations, but if perchance we are still having a lot of kids on virtual, we'll need, if they're ESE or ESOL, or some of them with those particular accommodations, they'll need to come in.
So for, for state testing, everyone must come into the building. The Department of Education will not allow us to administer that virtually.
Ah, okay. Well, that'll be fun.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my only comment on that.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, with respect to this legislature, legislature and what we should do, I guess my first question is, oh, and she just stepped out. I was gonna ask Ms. Patrica if FSBA is doing something, because I assume FADS is going to be doing something. And I would think that we all want to be speaking across the state, the same thing, which, which isn't to say that we shouldn't be advocating, but I think what we should look at, particularly given the communications piece that came earlier, we should be looking at drafting parents and teachers to work with us. We should be looking now for parents and teachers who want to meet with the legislators with us, once we have our speaking points, you know, aligned that, that we want to use. So that, that's my comment. Thank you.
Well, I don't think that, I've not heard that yet on FSBA, so that may be this week, they might have that conversation.
Certainly, if you would, raise the question, because I, I think you're right, that we need to move quickly, but there's no point in reinventing the wheel if somebody's already doing it, and then we create our own advocacy model using their, their platform.
And I know they were speaking of trying to be unified when they're, when we're going to speak on legislative issues. So that's, that's a good idea. Ms. Stout, I had a question, and I know I keep harping on homeschool virtual, because I'm living it every day with little people. And on the testing, when, how are they, like, for instance, today, the chat is off, the, so there's no way of communication. I mean, I know my granddaughter sat there for a good five minutes with her hand up, trying to get attention, which never happened. And then the computer went off, so then we could not even say that the computer went off. And we have two internets in our house to make sure that that doesn't happen, you know, Comcast and the other one. But, you know, so she was so frustrated, because she couldn't get the attention, because they're telling her to take a violin class, when she doesn't even have a violin. And so I just can imagine what happens with the test. If, if her computer goes down, or, you know, she had a question, they're, like Ms. Gittens was saying, you're paying attention to the kids, because you can see the kids in the background walking, but yet you, the teacher's not really focused on that individual child. And I know they're really trying, and I know this is all new, but I, I just think about, I think about that taking place. So how do we assure that these kids are going to be able to take that test and, because I don't know what she lost on that, in that 10, 15 minutes that she was down. She has no idea. And she tried to catch up where, where she was at.
So that's one of the reasons why our windows are our two or three weeks, depending on the time of the year, to make sure that schools have plenty of time to administer makeups. So if you think about, our schools are now one-to-one. So if, as a school, everyone is testing on Tuesday and Wednesday, for example, that would give them the rest of this week and all of next week to make, to handle those makeups. We train the test coordinators to run the data and to look for students that have not finished the test, and to go back and pull those students in some way to sit with them and make sure that the test is finished, so that we have the data points. Even if they don't finish within the window, the test will still be open for 21 days after they start the test, so the school can still get the data. We just may not export it into some of our district applications, since it's outside of the window. But on the other hand, we're also open with our schools, so if we see there is an issue across the board, then we could have a discussion with the executive directors and potentially the chiefs to expand the window if we need it to.
Okay, because I, I just, I know how stressed out a lot of kids get, just to test, period. So I could just only imagine them sitting there, and it, it goes black.
And we very much try to emphasize, especially with the move to iReady, that this is not meant to be high stakes and stressful. This is meant for us to see where the student is at, so we can direct instruction. It is not meant to be punitive in any way to the student.
So it's the same one that they took, pretty much for, during the summertime?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Patrica?
Did, Ms. Morgan, did you have a question about legislative thing while I was gone?
Yeah, so I just asked if FSBA has had any conversations about testing, on a platform, about testing at the state level?
Well, we've got to get our platform together and decide what we want to put on the FSBA platform before FSBA makes that decision. And I know Debbie knows the deadline on that. I'm sorry, Ms. Jordan knows the deadline on that. So they're in the process of putting that platform together right now.
Yeah, that's what I told her.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, she have a quick question?
Just a quick one, on the schedule, the statewide uniform and our district window, can we provide this out to the public at this point? And like in our social medias and whatever, just being able to back this up and say, make sure, remember that on, you know, September whatever, the kids are going to be testing? Is this in stone to that point? Like you've got, for example, the 14th to December 18th, you have ELA grade 10 retakes or whatever. I mean, I just picked that one out, but is that something, or is that something you can send us a little reminder that, you know, we're going to be testing this time, so, you know, as people are talking to you or you're mentioning it, just to remind people?
You're, you're speaking of the draft, correct?
So this is pending the board approval, so this was the briefing for you to review it. We won't post it on our outside website until you have approved it at a board meeting.
Right, but at that time, then we can go ahead and say, remind, you know, don't forget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, thank you for coming up and helping us as well. We appreciate both of you. Thank you very much. Next.
So you just experienced two first-time presenters.
They did great.
Adam Malloy was his first.
I was watching how they were looking, I was watching how they were looking back at, like, say something.
They did great, thank you so much.
They did a great job, thank you all.
Okay, so next, we are moving on to board attorney, I guess, recommendations?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Last week, the board approved the emergency rule for protective gear, and there was discussion about tweaking the language as we moved forward with the policy to make it a permanent policy. So I have some suggested language, and I just need guidance from the board as to how you want to proceed.
And which one are we looking at? I'm sorry, the?
There's one that's called?
Protective gear, which one are we looking at first, is what I'm asking?
The one that says 90-day protective gear policy, that's the one that you approved. And the one that says perm protective gear policy, that's the one with the suggested language.
Thank you.
So Attorney Dupree Bruno, you were asked, you asked us for responses to the policy. I know I submitted one. Do you have, did others, and is there a sense of? No. All right, I will say, I struck out after on line 13. I don't think the board, school board should be approving the recommendation before the fact. So I struck that out.
Ms. Patrica?
And we don't approve guidelines and procedures. As a board, that's not something we do. We approve policies, and the superintendent and his staff put meat on those policies, and certainly, if there are any issues with them, we can direct him to change them, but I, I thought that there was a sense that, especially surrounding this subject, the superintendent and his staff needed flexibility to respond, not just to this pandemic, but anything that might come up in the future. Requiring a board vote on such things would hamper their ability to respond. So I'm not, you know me, the word "procedures" should not be anywhere in a policy, because we adopt policy and the superintendent handles procedures. So I, I would like, I would like really all of the red language taken out.
Ms. Morgan, I did not see an email. I was looking.
Oh, okay, sorry, I corrected it on the, the document you sent us, where you could correct the document?
So which, just so I know?
And I've put, I put, you know, what I want to delete it, and then I wrote in what?
Okay. Could you share that, please?
I, I'm, I, I can't, because I'm not on my home computer, and that's where I did it from, and I have no idea where it is in this database or system.
Ms. Gittens? My, my comment about this is not so much, I understand, Ms. Patrica, about procedures and how that all works in the pecking order. My personal concern in having some of the verbiage in there is not so much approving as the transparency piece. Part, I think, of the, of the, some of the issues we're going through now is, we don't all know what is going on before it happens. And as the governance board, my thought in adding some verbiage, not so much as approval, but presentation to, or sharing with the rest of the governance team, before it gets out to the public, that is my concern. If, if the superintendent and his staff decide this is how we're going to do it, at least give us an opportunity to see it and to weigh in prior to, because it's easier to talk about it then than after the fact, and re, you know, bringing that horse back in the barn after it's already out. And we get the brunt from the public of why did you do this? And the public still does not understand that there are certain procedures and guidelines that we don't decide. And in order to maintain and help them to understand that, I think we need to have some part in, okay, this is what we're going to do.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, Attorney Dupree Bruno, may I ask you to go, just to review with us, the process for changing policy or adding the policy to our?
So this is a new policy that is going, you know, if the board approves it, gives consensus to move forward, will go through the regular rulemaking process to make this a permanent policy.
I mean, can you talk about the process for doing that? Because there is an opportunity for us to discuss it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, I didn't hear the last part.
No, I said, there is an opportunity for us to review and discuss it before it gets finally approved.
So there will be two readings. The first reading will be on the 22nd, if the board gives consensus to move forward today, and then the final reading will be on the 6th of October.
Thank you. So there is that opportunity for us to comment on it.
I think, I think what Ms. Gittens?
Will we have the guidelines to look at as well?
I think what Ms. Gittens was talking about, and this is the gist of the conversation from before, the policy is one thing, but then there are guidelines that gives the specifics on how this policy will be applied, depending on the circumstances. And the discussion was, some members of the board felt that they wanted to review those guidelines prior to. And there was a discussion to add some language with regards to the superintendent making a recommendation with regards to the guidelines, and then it coming back to the board.
And then, I know one thing, there was, the guidelines already went out prior to even the board vote or any, anything like that. So I think the question is that Ms. Gittens is bringing up is the fact that the guidelines went out a couple of weeks prior, and we had nothing to do with that. That wasn't anything we, I mean, actually didn't, I had a parent send them to me. I had no clue. So that is the question, I think, that she's trying to, to get to.
Can I comment on that?
And this, of course, will be for future issues.
All right, let me get, okay.
So to me, having the superintendent make a recommendation, share it with the board, and get approval from the board before it goes out, is the same thing as getting approval from the board, which takes us back to, you know, the procedure. I agree that the board should know, at the same time, the public knows what the guideline is, and I think that's the extent of it, and that's all we need to say. Once the superintendent has come up with a recommendation, he shares it with the board, so that, you know, period, shares it with the board, same time, no pre?
Before it goes public.
Hmm? Oh, sorry. Did you have?
Yeah, and I, and I believe that superintendent shares it with us, either in our individual meetings or by memo, before it goes public.
Ms. Gittens, please.
Well, and actually, what Ms. Juvenelli mentioned, there was a document that went out to parents that I was only aware of, because the parents sent it to me regarding, you know, the mask policy. So I, I'm just, I'm not trying to take superintendent's job over, or do his job, or, you know, step over the line. Just how do we become more transparent? Because we are the ones that get the questions about, you know, why did you all decide to do this when it wasn't us? So I don't know how we?
So my question, did you say, yourself, as well as Ms. Juvenelli, both of you received a letter from somebody? It was kind of sent out?
I have to ask the question, did somebody, did everybody get those guidelines prior to them going out to parents? Because I didn't.
I, I was not surprised by anything in those guidelines, because it was a process or guidelines that had evolved over a period of time, and the superintendent had updated us as a board, not just in one-on-ones, but in emails as well. So I, I saw how those guidelines were developing as they were receiving additional guidance from our health and medical expert partners. So I, when I saw the guidelines, there, none of it was a surprise to me.
I just never saw a final document.
No, I didn't.
But, but again, the transparency wasn't lacking, because I knew what was in that document.
Well, we were also going to do temperature checks, and that changed, so there was a lot of fluid things going on, so I think a final document would have been important.
Yeah, but I, I know that when they sent out, when they changed that, we received that information, that it was changed, like on the updates that we received. Ms. Vaughn, please? I know, I'm sorry.
Oh, what I was going to say is, to me, the key word here is what constitutes emergency. Don't we have another policy that's, or was it a statute that defines? We have that, do we not? What defines an emerg- What defines an emergency?
You have Board Policy 1.18 that talks about the general health and welfare and safety. And that's also throughout the statute.
Okay, and shame on me, I should have reviewed that one before.
That, this is very specific with regards to if there is a recommendation from the CDC or Department of Health requiring some type of protective gear.
Okay, so we have a different policy that spells out what an emergency is.
That's 1.18 for protective.
1.8.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's the overarching concept here, that there's going to be times that are true emergencies, like catastrophic hurricane that, that causes us to have some different policies or, or something like that. So I, I think what I'm hearing is that some, some of the board members are concerned that we'd be losing some of our oversight by allowing this policy to exist this way. But in truth, Ms. Dupree Bruno, would you say that 1.18 defines what an emergency is to the level that protects our oversight? If that makes sense?
I think 1.18 is the board's emergency policy that allows the superintendent to take action when there is a threat to the health, welfare and safety of students, staff.
Okay, and this just gets more specific, in other words?
This one is very limited to just whether or not there is a recommendation, advice or an order to be able to wear protective gear. That's all that this policy addresses.
Yeah, so if we make adjustments to this one, 1.181, wouldn't we have to make adjustments to 1.18?
I, I don't think that's necessarily, no.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to get it clear to make sure because we've had some problems and I know we're doing a review of all the policies coming up, that we don't have anything that would conflict since we're, if that makes sense?
Yes, this policy.
That everything meshes perfectly.
This policy is very, very specific.
Yeah.
The only guidance that I need from the board is whether or not either review or approve or any language that you would like prior to the guideline being issued. That's the only question that I have and I need guidance.
Ms. Patrica?
So as I look at 1.18, I wonder whether language that's similar in that policy would be sufficient to address your concerns. And that is, the school board shall be immediately informed or informed immediately of any guidelines before they're implemented by the superintendent or something along those lines.
Well, and if I may answer her.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Ms. Patrica?
Okay, yes, that, that's my point. And as I'm sitting here listening, it, it makes me wonder, do we actually need another specific policy? If it's already in there, why do we need something specific? You know, like I said last time, if we have a meteor shower and we have to do, you know, wear helmets, every time something that we are not aware of comes up, do we make a policy for it? Or do we just go along with? And, and let me just finish too, because one of the things I was mentioning to Mr., Ms. Dupree Bruno in review of our policies was that 1.18. But if it's already in there, that as the superintendent takes emergency control, that he keeps us informed and we're talking about that, then I honestly, I'm not sure we need something else specific.
If I could respond, so, Chief Chair, may I?
Yes, good, please.
So I do believe this policy is necessary because it, it allows the superintendent to enforce the guidelines. That's the key. This policy as written, 1.18, does not give him the authority to enforce the guidelines. So 1.181 is necessary for that purpose. But I think that the, and the language surrounding informed immediately of any event is with specific regard to the closing of schools. It's not with regard to anything surrounding any emergency. It's, it's with regard to closing schools. And, and 1.18 in particular really does take away our oversight authority and allows the superintendent to suspend any policy. So I believe this policy is necessary, number one, for enforcement. And I think the language that would make all of us comfortable would be immediately informed of those guidelines, perhaps before they're made public. Although, again, I think that's kind of redundant, given my experience with these guidelines. If it, if it makes everybody happier, then we're good to go.
But I, but I think it's important to know ahead of time, only because if, like they said, they receive information, that way you are, but then again, we have to make sure we're reading everything so that way we have that information to speak upon. So, yeah, I agree with you as well.
And can I?
Please, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, and I still say, one of the things that I would like for us to discuss is that 1.18. Because if that's the case, if we added or adjusted the language in that, then we would, to me, we would not need a separate. 1.18 to me is, is universal and overarching. And I think we need some, some additional pieces to that that would cover things like this.
Yeah, I think that Ms. Dupree Bruno believes that this is something that we need to have.
Yeah, I do believe that 1.181 is necessary, so it's enforceable. For example, I think at one of our last meetings, a question was posed, what do we do if spectators come to a sporting event and do not abide by the guidelines? How do we enforce that? Same if we're having meetings today and individuals come in and decide that they do not want to wear the protective gear or face covering, how do we enforce that? With regards to students who are in school and they decide that they're not going to wear the protective covering, how, what power do we have to enforce those? So that's why I believe that 1.181 is, is necessary. Now, the, there is, I believe what Ms. Patrica was referencing may be a compromise if the board wants to consider that, where we can put gear on the school board property. I'm at line 13, actually line 12 at the end. Protective gear on school board property will be established by the superintendent and the guidelines for same immediately provided to the board.
And say the last part, I couldn't hear it.
And guidelines for same will be immediately provided to the board.
And would those guidelines include what happens if you don't?
I don't know. I think that in the current guidelines, it does include the measures for what happens if you don't wear face covering and the steps and the philosophy behind it. I think we're going by a health versus discipline avenue. So there, there are different steps. Now, you know, when the superintendent provides it, if the board has questions, of course, they're free to ask those questions.
Ms. Patrica?
Just my last question is for Dr. Atkins. As, weigh in, do you have any?
All right, thank you.
Is the potential language negative for staff? Does it give you the leeway you need in order to respond to an emergency?
Yeah, I don't know if Dr. Atkins heard that last presentation with regards to the language that we're looking at, Dr. Atkins, at this point. We're looking at line 13, starting actually at line 12. Gear on school board property will be established by the superintendent, who will, who will, something along the lines of immediately provided to the board. It's different language than what's currently on the presentation. That's why I wanted to make sure that you were aware.
Well, I understand. I mean, I think it's going to be, you know, it could potentially be difficult, depending on the circumstance, that, that we try to notify the board as quickly as we possibly can. I am concerned about definition of immediate. You know, if you're in the middle of something, you need to, to make a decision and move and, and continue to. And then at, at some point in the very, you know, near future, you're going to notify the board, obviously. So immediate means immediate. Not trying to be problematic, but, you know, we're, we're making changes, you know, right here in this meeting and, and, you know, you asked for my response and that would be my, my initial response to that.
No, thank you. And maybe that word immediate, because what he says is very true. If you're trying to work on stuff, you don't have that opportunity to stop and notify. But I think what is important, that we're notified, if the public is going to know about it, we need to make sure that that's sent out to us as soon as we can get that. So I don't know if it's as soon as possible or what that right verbiage would be for, instead of immediately.
Well, I would recommend something along the lines of soon as practicable after the immediate health and safety issues have been addressed by the superintendent. Because that really allows you to do the work you need to do without worrying about updating us, but making sure that we're sort of the first to know. Does that work?
I, I think that would be, that would be something that would be more, more reasonable. I mean, I do, one of the concerns is that there's a, there's a different perception in terms of, of, you know, how, how soon individuals have received communication and even with us in terms of what communication we provided. I mean, we, we have gone back and provided communication and yet people feel they didn't receive it. You know, so anyway, I think, I think that a reasonable period or allowance to provide the board notice is what you would want. Obviously, we strive to, to provide you that communication as quickly as we possibly can. And, you know, our job, what we try to do is not to have a board member become surprised with something, particularly if it's an action that we've taken. But there's a lot of actions that we have to take, you know, so. And then there's other things that, that happen that we don't know about. Like we can't capture every media story and, and let you know about that because we don't even know about them. But sometimes we've been criticized for that. I wasn't aware of that Fox was covering this particular story. Well, I wasn't either, so.
I know, Ms. Gittens, you have something else?
Yeah, I, because this is such uncharted territory for all of us. I think that's what creates an issue. Our emergency plans, I believe, were formulated and, and built upon the fact that we live in Florida, we can have a hurricane or something blow up in the, at the last minute. And that is a different situation compared to, there is time with the pandemic. We wait to hear from CDC and from the governor and everybody. There is time that we don't have if there's an impending storm and the Weather Bureau says you got two hours to evacuate schools. And, and I believe there's a difference. This was not, you know, this was not something that, it started on March 13th and, you know, we, as things progress, there is still time. I just feel that it's different from saying that emergency situation like right now, we got to clear out the schools and get everybody home. As opposed to in a month's time, we're going to have possibly kids coming back and do they wear masks or not? And I just think we need to somehow differentiate or even, you know, just discuss. And maybe that's what we discuss in the next part that we were talking about in the next part of this process, to discuss it in workshop.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Okay, so then we have Policy 1.18, which has been in, in existence for many years and was recently, most recently changed in 2015. And it says that when there's an emergency, the superintendent can do what he needs to do. For instance, if we have a bomb threat, we empty a school. I mean, so that's even at the local school level. I think that the original policy that you presented to us, Attorney Bruno, the 1.181, that's all in red, where it says, it specifically addresses protective gear, which is a different situation for us. And, and that the item at, of concern was that how can we enforce this? So it says the purpose of the protective gear, masks, et cetera, is for medical and safety reasons only. Procedures or guidelines related to the use or implementation of protective gear on school board property will be established by the superintendent and are incorporated by reference herein. All individuals entering school board property shall abide by the guidelines established by the superintendent. I don't know that we need any more than that because we have a book full of policies. And, and in some cases, it would be prohibitive to think that he is going to call us and say, okay, the building's on fire, we're going to evacuate. I mean, and I'm being a little bit over dramatic here, but I, I think that we, we don't need to be creating more of a discussion or more problems than already exist. And we are in a, in a time where we don't know what we're doing. And as in a hurricane, when we work with the Emergency Operations Center, our staff has been working with the Department of Health and the CDC. And they really, what they say really takes precedent. So I think that this addresses the purpose that we needed to cover and that was to enforce protective gear being worn in the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I know, Ms. Vaughn, do you still have something that you want to?
It really is just what Ms. Fisher, the last part of what she said, there's no point in having policies if we can't enforce them. And I just, I trust your legal opinion on what we need to add to our emergency policy that will allow us to enforce this mask and other protective gear mandate.
So I guess what, so what you need from us, whether, as Ms. Fisher just stated, all the information is in the first version? Is that what you need from us to say that's what you want? Or do we, and go with that now?
Yes, because at the last meeting, we said that we would, I would come back with, you know, additional sample language. But if the board wants to just keep the current policy that is in place now, then that's the rule that we will move forward with. But I just need board direction.
And then if, when you do bring it back, there's two more opportunities that if, for some chance, that some of us decide that something else needs to, to be put in there, you have the opportunity to do that.
Yes, there'll be a first and a second reading.
Correct. So is everyone consensus on the original one without the new verbiage that was added in? Is everybody good with that for now? So we have five to two consensus. Ms. Givinelli?
So I went back and looked and there, that mask mandate that went out on the, to the families the week before school start was on August 24th. And I looked at the week, the weekly update prior to that and there's nothing. And I looked at them on that Monday as well. There was nothing. We were not given that, what was sent to the schools. So, I mean, was that an oversight? That's what I'm just trying to understand. I mean, we have to know these things, we're going to get these questions. I got calls all week and long regarding it. So, I mean.
And I, and I think that that was just part of the conversation with Dr. Atkins as far as, you know, making sure, you know, to get that information out to us as reasonable as possible. So that way we are not caught off guard.
He said we can't do it immediately, but it should be at the same time that it goes out to principals. They get it, they get it the Friday before. I mean, they had to have received it by then, for them to send it out Monday. So if they, that can be done, I mean, it's easily just a CCS in. I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
Thank you for, for those comments.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any issue with what she's saying. I mean, I, I don't recall what the line of communication or the, who got communicated with who when, but, but, you know, communication, they're going out to principals and having something go out to the board. I don't, I, I don't think that's a problem at all.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Because I know Ms. Stowe usually will send us out, she's really good at sending everything out to us. And she even will notify us when something will be going out to the families or to the schools. And I really appreciate all of that.
I mean, I do, I do recall, we, we all had a lot of, you know, I think, conversation about this whole mask issue. So, you know, possibly we made some assumptions that we had communicated with you, you know, and that you had that knowledge that that was going to happen. You know, I, I certainly felt that way. But, but again, I don't, I don't recall the specifics, but. But I know that it was a, I knew it was a major decision and that that you all were at least involved in the discussion prior to making that decision. So, anyway.
So, Ms. Dupree Bruno, so you have what you need. And then and then ladies, whoever, if anyone has any comments or concerns or issues, we can certainly bring those. They can come back on our first or second readings.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have the next one as well.
I think we need to get Mr. Blondell and Ms. Ewing on the phone.
It's Lecter, she's here, I've seen her. They're not here. And they said that, I know when they were asked about being at the meetings at the last, last week, they were saying that they have to give notification. Are we not giving them enough notifications so that they can tell whoever they have to tell that they're going to be here? I didn't understand that when they said that they have to get permission.
They can clarify, but my understanding is that they needed to get, I don't want to say permission, but authorization to come was my understanding.
Right, so they needed a timeframe for that and do we not give that to them?
They were, they were, they have not, they're still meeting virtually. They're not, they're not authorized to meet in public. They're, that's what, that was my understanding.
Okay, because I thought he said that they didn't have enough time.
No, they just.
Vacation, permission, new company.
And meet virtually, their, their business is still zooming, they're not in-person meetings.
But if I may, I I do believe they said that they could get authorization with enough.
Notice.
Time to make that request.
Okay, I thought, I thought that's what they said.
But they needed more.
Are they on?
They needed more lead time to make the request.
Mr. Blondell, Ms. Ewing? If you could just clarify, there was a question as to your ability to appear in person. What is the policy and is it something with regards to having appropriate lead time? Or what is it, what do we need to do so you can appear in person?
We have charter calls, but people think that it's a charter call. We use a charter form. We usually need about 10 days in order to get all the approvals. We have to run it up the chain.
Very well, you're not clear. It's broken up.
What about now?
Are your gurgles?
Not the greatest.
Matt, you want to see if they can?
Are you able to hear me any clearer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So we clarify, we have to run up the approval chain within our company before we can travel or 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 be in person at a client location. And it takes about 10 days to get those approvals.
Thank you. So that was my question, did they not have enough time to have that done in order to be here?
I can't tell you the exact date that we talked about them, you know, participating in this meeting and last week's meeting to tell you whether or not it was within 10 days, I can't tell you.
Ms. Morgan?
My question is, is this because of COVID or is this standard operating practice for the firm? In other words, every time we wanted to meet with RSM, we'd have to give them at least a 14-day heads-up? That's what I.
It's COVID. COVID.
Did that make sense?
They said COVID.
It's just COVID?
Uh-huh.
It's 10 days.
I missed that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions with regard to that before we get started, board members?
So I'm just going to give the highlights. I do want to thank Kelly Lecter for assisting in these negotiations. And I just want to give quick highlights and then open the floor to RSM to answer any questions that you may have and to have further discussion. In reviewing the SOW, the, there were several potential audits. And we limited it to the second one from your evaluation from last year, which was the purchasing and procurement compliance, number two, and the human resources recruitment and onboarding, which was number three. Those were the, these are recommendations. If the board chooses to do something else, that's definitely within your purview. We also tightened up the language with regards to meetings, requests, and research, as well as the hotline relevant to waste, fraud, and abuse. On page two of the SOW, it discusses the purchasing and procurement. And just for the board's information, it specifically defines that it's for the evaluation and design and control structure. In addition, there is the process documentation that is outlined on page three, as well as the evaluation of the design and operation and effectiveness. We did tweak some language with regards to communication that the present, at the conclusion of the audit, there will be a presentation to the school board. They will, if we decide to move forward with the audit committee, there'll be a presentation to the audit committee as well. There will be questions that could be sent to RSM and they will be able to address those questions. They will have the bi-weekly updates, which will be provided to the board and audit committee or any, anyone else that the board designates via email. And those dashboard emails will be a little bit more specific to address current progress, future procedures, and the anticipated timelines. And timelines is something that we want to discuss today with regards to these two audits. The same changes were made under the human resources recruitment. If we go to page six, it does again discuss the ability for the board to ask questions and have them answer the questions to the entire board. In addition, there are some questions with regards to who does the board authorize to meet with RSM? Can any individual board member just call them to ask questions? Can any staff member just call them to ask questions? So those are some issues that we would like board guidance on. With regards to the waste, fraud, and abuse hotline, we've discussed that the calls will come in. RSM will then contact the school board attorney's office. A decision will be made with regards to whether or not there's legal sufficiency. If so, then an investigation if it's required. However, we would like some guidelines from the board as to that process. They're going to prepare another statement of labor that outlines how much time they feel they will need for the investigation. Do you want this to come back to the board? Do you want it to go to the audit committee? Or do you want staff to make the decision to move forward with regards to these investigations? And one thing I do want to point out to the board, when RSM is working on a project, it is per person. So the board needs to be aware of that, that there is a per-person charge, not just $200 per hour. It's per person. We did tweak some information with regards to communication. Again, if there is some type of delay on the district side, RSM has an affirmative obligation to advise that there is a delay on the district side. That's on page seven in the bullets. And if they become aware that they need additional information, they will also immediately notify us. Okay, that's basically a brief summary. At this time, I will hand the floor to Mr. Blondell and Ms. Ewing to discuss and answer any questions.
Are there?
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'm sorry, Attorney, were they going to speak about any of this first or?
Did you just say they were going to answer questions?
They can speak on this, they can answer questions, anything else that you require.
Well, is is there anything that they wanted to say before I ask my questions, what I'm asking?
Mr. Blondell, Ms. Ewing, do you have anything, any statement prior to our discussion?
I don't know if they're still there.
Yes, no, we don't. We just very much look forward to working with the board on this.
Thank you.
Okay, I had two things. One, when we first acquired the services of RSM, when I was the chair, there was discussion and a and emails and things that went to the board stating that any board member has the same opportunity to talk with them. And that was clarified because at one point it was an issue. And I know that that was stated when we first started. And regarding the question about the $200 per person, as they are doing investigations or whatever it is, can we have the option of, you know, if they present to us, look, it's going to take two people to do this because, I think that we should be given that that information prior to, as opposed to saying, well, we had, you know, two, three people to come and and to do this. So I I would somehow like us to have the option as a board to say yea or nay if it's going to take more people or not with an explanation from them as to why.
Ms. Morgan?
So first a comment. We never got a report on construction or maintenance. We never got a report. This is the exact same contract, for all intents and purposes, apart from the wordsmithing, that we got the first time around. We are a year, past a year into that contract, and we have no report. So I am looking for very specific deliverables, as I said. When is the project starting? What are the expectations that the project will have? What are the outcomes that we expect? And when is this thing due? With respect to cost, as far as I'm concerned, they work for us. There should be a manager. That manager takes calls from all of us at no cost, just as the board attorney takes calls from us and the superintendent takes calls from us. That's part of the contract. I don't think we have any business talking to any of the other people, but I think we we should have the right individually to speak to the project manager at no cost to us. I'm okay with the total cost because I don't, you know, they're telling me it costs $75,000 to do this job. I'm not going to be able to say, or I'm not going to be able to judge their, just their recommendation that they use two people at X number of dollars per hour for X period of time. You know, I I just want to know that what they're charging is approximately what would be a going cost for doing this kind of of work for someone else. So honestly, I got to say, I'm just really disappointed. I know that this is, we're stuck here and I know we got to move forward. But I'm going to say again, as I said earlier, previously, I am really struggling with this relationship. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Patrica?
So I I did, I did receive a report, but Attorney Dupree Bruno, is it reasonable for us to expect an oral explanation of that report to be presented with staff so that the board can address RSM, ask questions surrounding the report, that that kind of thing? And that has not happened and that has not been scheduled, is that correct?
There will be a discussion. We were going through the SOW first, but there will be a presentation to the board on the construction report.
Okay, so I I'm not clear on why a discussion regarding the SOW had. I don't feel comfortable entering into a new work agreement with RSM without knowing what what product I'm going to receive, soup to nuts. And right now I don't have that sense. So I'd like to expedite that process if we could so that I can get a sense for really what we're getting here. I think one of the big pushes in the beginning was you're going to experience more in savings and you're going to be paying in fees. And I didn't see that in this report. I didn't see those kinds of recommendations. So I'm not clear on that. The, I have one other concern and, you know, we're approving a massive budget tonight. So this might seem like a small concern, but our original statement of work indicated that the ethics and whistleblower policy was going to cost $10,000. I believe we were billed 18. And I understand that that was an estimate. But when you come at us with a bill that's almost double the cost of the estimate, I think that should be brought to our attention and it wasn't. I understand the bill was paid, I don't know why, I don't know how, but that, there was zero transparency in that. From my perspective as a board member, I was hit, I was very unprepared for that. And I've not received an explanation. And I, this is not the first time I brought that up in public either, so.
So I don't know if Ms. Ewing or Mr. Blondell can address that concern.
Hi, Ms. Ewing. So yes, I'm trying to think of how to, I'll go in order. I guess, I believe this work has stated that it was not received. Mr. Blondell?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ewing, we can't hear you. Whatever connection you're on is not working.
How about now, is it better?
Yes.
A little bit better.
Matt, you want to try?
Clara, go ahead.
That was better.
So I think the first comment, you know, we provided the report. I believe Ms. Morgan mentioned that she hadn't received the report. We have provided that to the entire board on July 30th. My understanding is that the district focused on opening schools and opening schools faithfully was was the predication for not scheduling a meeting for us to discuss the report with the full board sooner. As Mr. Dupree Bruno mentioned, you know, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting for us to present that that report and look forward to doing so. For the additional billing, I believe that was the discussion that we had with the board chair. And, you know, as far as the the $8,000 versus the $10,000, you know, my understanding and some conversations that I've had with Clara was that that was, you know, a portion, a small portion of what we actually incurred in in several of the meetings and that we had and where we were on site and coming to meet with you. And you guys may recall Ernie and all of those. And, you know, there were several hours that we had incurred prior to sending that invoice that we, and after that invoice really, that we have not sent an invoice for. And that's all just to say that it was just a portion of of what we had incurred to the point. And we had discussed it with the board chair.
I appreciate that. When the superintendent makes recommendations for board approval for expenditures, there's a limit. And if he wants to go above that limit, he has to come to us and ask as a board for that approval. And the same is true for the board attorney. I would request that that practice to be implemented going forward. And then just to the board in general, as we look at the new statement of work, I wonder whether it doesn't, you know, I look at purchasing and procurement compliance and I know that, or at least I understand based on recent presentations to this board that they implemented new policies two or three years ago. They've been in process and now they're going back out to the community to have those procedures beat up again to make them even better. Does it make sense for us to audit those right now? It, I I don't know that that makes sense at this point in time. But the next thing that's on our list is human resources recruitment and onboarding. And I don't think they have the bandwidth right now to be undergoing an audit. So I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant to move forward on either one of those right now. I feel like purchasing and procurement might be redundant, given the efforts that are going on there. Am I making sense?
I will just, I would just add that both HR and procurement were both axed in terms of timing for any types of audit. And HR said between October and February would be okay for them. And procurement said between September and April.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Thank you. In response to the $18,000, I did have a conversation with RSM. And they said that they had incurred additional expenses. And we have to remember that the whistleblower policy that started, like I said, almost a year ago, that was supposed to take a couple of months to do, ended up taking many, many more months to do with many extra meetings and all of that. And when they said that they had incurred extra expenses, I said, well, you know, submit your bill. Now, I had, like Ms. Patrica said, I had no idea that it was not going to. Now, I had, like Ms. Patrica said, I had no idea that it was not going to come before the board. My error, I suppose, because I thought, I was not saying, go ahead and pay them. What I was saying is that if you did work and you want to submit it for payment, submit it for payment. And like Ms. Patrica said, I don't know how that just went ahead and was paid, and there was nothing brought before us. I really don't. And maybe that's something that slipped through the cracks with me. I will take that on my back. But I feel, I don't, I'm not saying that it was the correct amount, but I'm saying that we also have to consider that it almost took a year to get that whole policy across the finish line. And there were a lot of, you know, I'm not finger pointing, I'm saying it took a long time. There were a lot of meetings, a lot of things that came up. So I don't know.
But you would not have the authority to-
I didn't say, yeah, to pay it. That's what-
You don't have that authority.
That piece in there is where I'm foggy, okay? I told them, submit a bill. If you did the work, submit the bill. And my impression would be, it would come before the board as far as, you know, do we pay this? Or maybe that's a question for finance. How and when was it approved to be paid? And since it was over, what we had said, and no one said anything about it, and it was just paid, so.
I think Dr. Desmore's going to answer that real quick.
No? No. Don't think it's on.
Not on.
They probably have to turn it on.
We'll go to that one.
Yeah.
They probably didn't turn it on in the back.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So the invoice that was in question, I think that we had a misunderstanding in terms of the interpretation of the contract, because as we saw it or interpreted it at the time, there was a total amount associated with that contract. We got an invoice that was consistent with the total amount of that contract. In other words, it didn't take it over the total amount. And so the invoice, once it was processed through the board office, was paid through finance. So I believe that there was, you know, we just had a misunderstanding in terms of how the contract was to be interpreted, the actual individual pieces versus total amount of the contract and total invoices that have been paid, which is really what, you know, we're tracking through finances, would be that total contract amount, which would have matched to the total purchase order amount. So we'll just need better communication, which I can do, between me and board office as we get into the new statement of work, the new contract, how it's structured, and make sure that our invoices that we receive are in alignment with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I do want to apologize to Matt. I did get the report, and I did read it. I think my sense that we hadn't got the report was that we hadn't finished the process, and we hadn't had an opportunity to talk about what it cost, how long it took, and apply that conversation to this statement of work. So Matt, I'm sorry, I did read it. Thank you.
So then, I just want to follow up on that regarding the conversation that Clara and Matt had with me. They had emailed me on the 17th of July requesting to talk about the report with the facility, development, and programming, and procurement departments, et cetera. So they also, we needed to establish some, the board distribution and presentation protocol. Following our conversation during which some things were mentioned as far as that they were still waiting on a missing item, and they needed a management action plan. So I followed up with an email to all of you on the 27th of July, and to Dr. Atkins and Attorney Bruno. And I bullet pointed all of the conversation, which discussed in closing that they were waiting for a management action plan, which addresses estimated date of completion of construction plan and the approval of the chief legal counsel. That they would send us a draft of the internal audit charter to benefit function at no charge. That they would remit to us the final bill for $25,000 that was previously budgeted, and that they wish to schedule quarterly meetings with the board. So that information following our conversation was sent to all of you, so I just wanted to make sure that you all had an opportunity to review that.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, and Ms. Gittens, I'm not, this is not meant to, in any way imply that you took any kind of liberties you shouldn't have taken as a board chair. That's not the issue. The issue is that, you know, RSM knows that they don't report to the board chair, they report to seven people. And that, I get where finance is coming from on this, but it should have come before this board for approval, and it didn't. And that's not on you. That's on RSM, as far as I'm concerned. So I don't want you to think that I'm saying you took liberties you shouldn't have taken. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it was a lack of communication on their part that concerns me. I get that it took them longer than it was supposed to take them, but come to me for approval, and we're good to go. I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be surprised when I look at an estimate, and what we actually paid is almost twice that estimate. And if we're going to continue with them, we need to have, we need to have clear expectations for them so that we know, they know in the future, you know, this can't go through the board chair, this has to be presented to the board. That's my sense, that's how I feel about it. And I share Ms. Morgan's concerns. I just, I don't know how I continue in a relationship when I don't know what the final product is going to look like going forward. And that's really the seat that I feel like I'm in right now. I don't, I don't know what the final product is going to be going forward.
I think, Ms. DePree Bruno, you have some, did you want to say something? Okay.
Can I please respond to that first?
Okay, because I need to get Ms. Vaughn, who hasn't had an opportunity yet.
Okay, in response, I didn't take it personally, but I think that there was fault, if you want to call it that, in more than one, just like with finance, there was not communication. There was, I was thinking that it was going to come before the board. So there are a lot of pieces that went into that, you know, that bill and paying that bill. I think what my suggestion would be, is that, okay, we finish with the whistleblower piece, that if the board could see and do that report of the investigation that they've done, would maybe give everyone a clearer expectation as to, this is what we did on this, this is what we did on this, and then be able to make a better plan going forward. And I keep hearing that, you know, we don't know what they did. So I'm thinking, why make a decision if we haven't seen that? And we need to plan to have them appear to show us or give us that report of the investigation that they've already done.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, I just had something small. In what Ms. Fisher read, you referenced quarterly reports, right?
That they, yes.
On page-
That they wish to schedule quarterly meetings with the board.
Okay, I'm looking at page six. RSM will formally report to the board on a semi-annual basis. RSM will meet with the board chair and board attorney as needed, so that isolates that meeting with two individuals and with individual board members. I'm just curious about that wording, and should it not say quarterly? And should we get, if we stick with this, detailed reports from the board chair and the board attorney after those meetings take place?
A second, Ms. DePree Bruno?
Vaughn, I can clarify that a little bit.
Yes.
Because there was, following the discussion that Ms. Fisher had with RSM, because they were planning on meeting with the board on a quarterly basis, but then we had some discussions with regards to the audit committee. And that's why we changed the language to "as needed," because we didn't know if, you know, the board would require additional meetings with them, if it would go through the audit committee, or how you wanted to do that. So that's why we changed it to "as needed." But if the board wants it quarterly, we can certainly change that back.
It just, to me, semi-annually is an awful big chunk of time, and that worries me. That worries me because I, you know, we get the dashboards and that sort of thing, but there's not much explanation on a dashboard. I would like interim, preferably in-person, reports so that we can ask questions. I know, obviously, we can call and ask questions about dashboard, but I benefit from the questions of my colleagues, because often somebody brings something up, and I'm like, oh, I hadn't thought about that. Or, yeah, I like that opinion, surprisingly, better than mine. But, so, yeah, that bothers me, semi-annual. I would rather stick with the quarterly.
So if it's the board's desire, we can definitely change that to quarterly.
Ms. Chauvinelli?
Okay, so I think that I'm understanding what Ms. Patrica and Ms. Morgan are saying. They did a risk assessment, and in that risk assessment, they gave us a list of things that they felt that should be audited. I think they've audited one of that, one of the list. So I think we know a timeline, a goal and a timeline. They should say, this department's going to take X amount of weeks to do. And if we don't, I mean, and if it's taking longer, they need to be able to tell us that and tell us why. We need to know why. So our expectations are then written out. So I think that is where, I don't, I don't think that that is clear in this. Am I, is-
Right.
Right. And so I think we need clarity. So I agree that, I agree with them both, because I think that this is way too vague, and we're starting our process all over again, and I don't want to be another year and a half out and only have one, one check off that list. And we trusted their risk assessment, and now that's not even on here, really. I mean, it's part of it, I think, but not even all of it. So I think that is where we need to be. We need to be defined, it needs to be defined. That's, I think that's where we're not on the same page.
Ms. DePree Bruno?
If I may.
Go ahead.
Part of this, I think, will be covered through the audit committee process, which was discussed at the last meeting. And, you know, I've had some conversations with Mr. DePree Bruno about this, and I think what our aim to do is to establish, you know, audit committee, these reporting dates that would coincide, you know, with the board reporting dates, and having dates on the calendar where we say, this is the date where we will present this report. And I think that establishes a timeline, which everybody, I think, wants, and establishes a very specific, solid date where these reports are going to be presented on this day. Everybody understands that timeline, and it's part of this formal process of reporting through an audit committee that, as the chair mentioned, we are happy to provide some example audit committee charters, that, you know, we're happy to work with Mr. DePree Bruno, and the board designees as that process is further defined. But I think, you know, having the specified dates on the calendar is going to help a lot of this open timeline. And I think we want that, I think you guys want that, and that's definitely something that's going to come with establishing these meetings well in advance. And we all know that we're all working towards that as a deadline, and where that date will be where we present our final report.
And I would just, I was just going to add, Matt, if you can just explain to them a little bit about the conversation we had about the back date and how that process would work in terms of timeline.
About the what?
The way, in other words, looking at it from the end date to the start date in terms of timeline. If you could explain that a little bit to them.
Right, so if we establish a date for a meeting, you know, and we know that documents are due at least a week before, and depending on how that works with the audit committee, we would back into, and understanding, you know, of course, we're talking with the departments, like Ms. DePree Bruno mentioned, that she talked to procurement, and she talked to HR about when they could handle an audit. We'd be working in those timelines to back into when we start, when field work is completed, when the report would be in draft form, so that we're talking with management about it. And then, of course, when the final version comes to the board, and for our discussion with the board.
Okay, I don't know. I just, I feel the same way that, Ms. Lecturer, you have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I could, and I apologize for stepping out here, but what I discussed, and what I think that everybody is kind of looking for, including us, because in the last part of the contract, it says that they'll be paid monthly based on their progress in the projects. The only way that we can pay them monthly on the progress of their projects is to understand where they are in their projects in order to do that. So I think it's very important that before we approve anything, that there's a project plan with a set timeline of when, what's going to occur within a certain timeline, so that we can make sure that we track that timeline, and we can pay them according to their actual completions. And so that's what I had been suggesting that we do, and I think that's what we've been trying to work towards, and I'm hoping that's what we can get in order to do this. And I think that's kind of like what everybody is looking for, is an actual project plan that lays out the timeline based on each step that they are proposing to go through.
No, thank you so much. I definitely agree with you too, because I have the same issues as my counterparts do as well, and the, how I feel about this whole process going through, because I want to make sure that we're not just an open checkbook, that whatever it is, we're going to pay. We need to make sure that we are seeing the fruits of their labor. We want to know what's going on. And I'm sitting here listening to how the audit committee is going to be, listening to all this, and then bringing it back to us, I feel that we're being, as a board, we're being removed from that, excluded. And I think that we need to be aware, not just three people or one part of us out of seven, we need to be, we need to know, you work for us, all of us. And I think that, and I think it's like out of sight, out of mind, because you don't see us, we don't see what you're doing. So we are just assuming or guessing what is taking place. And yes, we do get those reports, but even when you're looking at the dashboards, I can take those dashboards and line them up side by side, and maybe one word has changed on that. So to me, that's not really seeing what is taking place. That's what I have to share. And I'm so sorry, Ms. Chauvinelli, I hope I did not interrupt you.
No, 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 I agree, I agree. And actually, then that leads me to one of my concerns is, so what staff is going to support them in their efforts when, for, you know, is that going to be assigned to you, Ms. Lecturer? Or is it going to be assigned to one person? Or, I mean, it sounds like to me it could be a lot of staff involved, and I get that, but I think we need to, we need to be made aware of that as well. That's where I'm going, because we need to know, you know, how everyone's being utilized and how consuming it is. We're, like you said, we're disconnected, we're not, we're not on, you know, we're not, we don't know what's going on. So I think that's really important to understand and validate the contract, you know?
Do you believe that the discussions were, that your dashboards are supposed to be much more informative with the timeline in the dashboards, where they are, and telling you what progress they have made, really made, what they've done, and not to the detail of, you know, well, I've talked to, you know, John Smith about this, but I've talked to, you know, 10 employees in this department, and, you know, that type of detail, so that you're getting more information. And if they're doing that in their dashboards, we can, you really don't have to have- And if they're doing that in their dashboards, we can, you really don't have to have any one person kind of managing it when it comes time to payment. Someone can review the dashboards to see where they are and if they've really met that timeline that they say they have.
Right, because I know sometimes on the dashboard it says, waiting for manager some information. Well, what is it that you're waiting for?
Yes.
We have no idea what that is. What does that look like?
And there's a couple of spots in the contract where they talk about, you know, that it's, if it's additional cost to the district if they're waiting for us, and we had them change that so that it says, once they've notified us, to give us sufficient time to make sure that there's no holdup on staffs, and so that we know where we are in the process, who's holding that up, who we need to talk to to keep it moving forward.
Exactly, because that could cost us quite a bit of money. I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher.
So I just wanted to suggest one thing. Over the past several months, we have not been working in our normal modus of operating. And I'm concerned that some of what happened, where there were some issues where they were waiting on information, working with staff to complete their part of the audit that they were doing, but we had people who were not in the building for quite a while, and they were not here physically. So I don't know, but I suspect that that was part of the problem with the timeline, that there was not always an opportunity on a daily basis to get with the people they needed to get with, and have the information about the procedures and the processes, and access the chief legal counsel, and the construction contract, et cetera, because that was part of the conversation. And I think that as moving forward, we have to make sure that we have a mechanism to ensure that the communication and the involvement with staff and the board is more defined.
All right, Ms. Patrica?
So everything you just suggested, none of it appears in the statement of work. So my question for you, attorney DePree Bruno, is, was the purpose of today's meeting to get our feedback, so that you could amend this statement of work before you bring it to us for approval?
This, the purpose of this was to share with you and get your feedback exactly, to tell you where we were, what Ms. Lecter represented is exactly what the discussions were. They did add additional sentences with regards to the dashboards, in terms of what will be contained in the dashboard. If you want it to be more specific in terms of, you know, we can work on that language to make it more specific.
And I did say, under my breath, and I apologize to you, Ms. Vaughn, because I know that you hate that, I did say, under my breath, when we were talking about the dashboards, that they are pretty much useless the way they come to us now. So is there a way that we can have a presentation on the report that's been provided to us along with a different dashboard sent to us to show us where they are before we make a decision on the statement of work? In addition to the alter or the amended statement of work? That's a lot, I know, but again, I don't, I don't know what relationship I'm entering into if I don't know the relationship I've had up to this point.
So Mr. Blondell and Ms. Ewing, can they, can you provide a sample new dashboard for the board to review? And we can add this to the discussion when you do the presentation on the construction audit.
Yes, we're happy to do that.
Ms. Gittens?
I think it's been covered, but can we, as far as time-wise as well, you know, decide when, since they need time in between to prepare and to get everything ready to be here, can we set that time? They said they needed 10 days. Can we definitely do that? And then my final comment is, kind of along with what Ms. Fisher was saying, there's been a lot of different things that happened from March. And we also don't forget that the process for the whistleblower started last fall. There were several months that they were waiting on information and decisions from the district, so just keeping that in mind. And I think we need to just set a time now.
And I think that Ms. DePree Bruno has that.
So I don't know if Ms. Ewing and Mr. Blondell are available on September 21st in the morning for a workshop on the construction audit, as well as to continue the discussion on the SOW, as well as provide the board with the sample of the dashboard and timelines now that we know when the two other departments will be available. I think that would be helpful to them. And I'm sure the board would like for you to appear in person.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Jivinelli, please.
Well, just add to one of the things I was mentioning about staff, but, I mean, will we be guided to, you know, advised when they're actually in the building, or if they're doing everything virtual, or, you know, through the internet? I mean, do they have to, I mean, when do they have to be here? Should, you know, those are all details that we just don't know anything about, you know, what they need from the district to, you know, to do their job.
Matt, can you answer that?
We would intend to, I believe, start most of these remotely, which, you know, I don't think we have a problem with. We've issued several reports to some other school districts in the past several months, you know, having done them completely remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
So as I understand it, going forward, the advisory committee will be taking over a lot of this detail-type stuff. But I'm concerned that we are delegating to the board attorney our responsibility for this contract, and she doesn't know, because she's not been through this with us before, nor has she been through an operation a lot of before, what our expectations are. And so I'm a little concerned that we're leaving it strictly in her hands as a, really to do the contract analysis, as opposed to, you know, what the meat of the contract is in terms, not contract, statement of work. Contract is her responsibility, the statement of work is ours. And I'm concerned that we are delegating the statement of work to the board attorney. You know, I mean, it's great that she's been willing to do this, but I'm not sure that that's appropriate.
Well, and I think that
What we're doing today?
We're doing this today so that you can get the feedback from us of where we want this to go. Is that correct?
That was the intention.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica?
And Ms. Morgan, I'm not sure there's any other way to do it at this point, to be honest with you. I hear what you're saying, but to get seven people on the same board, she needs to get our feedback in public, because if she takes it from us individually and it's conflicting, we're just never going to get anywhere.
No, no, all I'm suggesting is that she sit with someone like Ms. Fisher, the chair, when she's put together a rough draft, and at least let Ms. Fisher, who has sat here for a long time and has been through audits, and I think has had the opportunity to hear what we've had to say, at least sit with her and make certain that a lot of the issues that concern the board are being addressed. That's all I'm asking, just another pair of eyeballs, because I know that going forward, the advisory committee will be doing a lot of this work, and we'll be stepping back. But I just feel like we're asking, we're asking for more time, we're asking somebody to commit a lot of time to do something that's not necessarily their responsibility.
Okay. You hear what?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to add something to that?
Not right this minute.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
And I really, I'm sorry, but I disagree with that. I think the purpose of this meeting and right now is for Mr. Prey Bruno and all of us to sit and look at the draft that RSM has presented us with, and whether she's aware of what happened in the past, or how to read it, or whatever, it's us that discusses it. And I don't think we need to add another layer, just to have the chair look at it before it comes back to us and workshop to look at it and say what we think. I think as, with the changes that we've discussed prior to the meeting, giving us whatever information prior to, so that we can individually look at it and decide if we can live with it or come up with our questions. We come back into a venue such as this and discuss it and ask our questions. I'm just afraid adding another layer to meet with someone individually is not going to help us all to agree and say, yes, this is fine.
Well, but I also think it was really important of what Ms. Lecter has brought to our attention, because that's imperative that we have that communication, and what they need as well to make all this happen, so.
And they have said that they're going to
Thank you for doing that.
put that in the draft. So the next time we see a draft, it should have the information Ms. Lecter talked about, the questions that we have discussed. They have all of that, they've heard us. I think we just need to follow through the process, which is what you've said on the 21st to meet, and prior to that, we all take a look at it and come up with our questions and go forward.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, did you have something to say?
Yes, yes. I agree with most of the statements that have been made, especially about the timeline and all of that, but I feel compelled to throw in something that was controversial with this process in the past. Several people have alluded to how long it took us with the fraud waste, that whole thing. And I specifically recall a blame game at that time. It was, Mr. Quick was our attorney at the time, and I know I was getting restless with, well, when's this going to be done? And I would hear, on one hand, from him, who had been with RSM, we're waiting on staff. And then I'd talk to Dr. Atkins, no, we provided it, we're waiting on them. I don't know how this kind of scenario can be. I'm hoping that with a specific timeline, something that's reasonable for both staff and RSM to meet deadlines, I'm hoping that that will get rid of what happened months ago, because honestly, that was ridiculous. It was ridiculous how long it took, and I don't know who is to blame, but maybe us as a board for not putting our foot down and saying, look, do it, it's due in a week and a half, or whatever. So I don't know what can be put in there so that we don't have one or the other
Well, I think that
not meeting their goals.
I think that is what, that we had brought up about, as far as what you said, the timeline, you're absolutely correct. And then that way, if they let us know that there is a, what is that timeline, what does that look like, then we know exactly what that, what to expect from them, they know what to expect, how they're paid, and life is good.
But, yeah, exactly, exactly. And I think it'll help, but what I'm saying is, if something breaks down within that, I do not want to see another set of blame games. No, it's them. No, they're dragging their heels. Somehow we have to, I don't know how that can be solved. It looks like Ms. Lecter has an idea.
If I may, as we discussed the dashboard, that was one of the things that we said that must be in the dashboard. If staff is not responding and you're waiting on staff, it must be noted in the dashboard so that we have the opportunity to make a correction, so that there is no name game going back and forth. We know upfront who it is. If it's not in the dashboard, then they can't say it's staff, because there was no notification that staff was the holdup in the process. So all of that has to be in the dashboard, or it's not a staff issue.
Okay, so let's make sure that that's covered.
It was.
Also on page seven, it's, we added language that RSM will also let the board know in a timely manner where there is, if there's a lack of appropriate cooperation or direction, if there's any type of issues along those lines. And in the next bullet on page seven, this is bullet number four, they will also advise in a timely manner if there's additional information that they need and that they're not receiving. So it's in the SOW, and as Ms. Lecter indicated, this was part of our discussion to ensure that it is in the dashboard.
Good, thank you.
There's one more area that I do have some concern with, and it's on page six, if you'll bring that up, so we can look at page six. So if you look at the second paragraph, it says, "From time to time, the school board or district staff may call upon RSM to perform ad hoc requests, research, and attend meetings beyond the above projects." My concern in this one is that it leaves it wide open. I could call them and tell them to do something, and based on this, they would do it, because there's no directive of who can direct their work. And that's where we were looking for some direction from you all, on who really can direct them to do work that's going to create a bill for us to have to pay. And so that was my concern, and one of the things that I was asking, and that, Mr., I always mess your name up, and I'm sorry.
And I agree.
Bruno, Ms. Bruno asked, and we were talking about, we need to be specific in that language on who can direct their work, so that we know who can incur extra expenses.
100%, so that would be, that would be the board. Not one individual, but it would have to be the complete board.
Right.
And you take staff out.
And takes that
Yes, for sure.
or staff.
Okay. Do you have any other recommendations?
I think that the rest of the recommendations that I had submitted to them late last week, it was late last week, I think that Ms. Bruno had discussed with them, and they were putting in the contract. I will verify that when it comes back.
Okay. So Ms. DePree Bruno?
That was pretty much it. We just wanted to have the board take a look at this and give us some feedback, so we can go back and speak to RSM, and then come back to you with a revised SOW, as well as the presentation.
My guess is that you've got all the feedback you wanted and then some. I'm smiling.
And if there's anything else that you think about afterwards, just let us know, so that we can address it.
And then, does anyone from RSM have any last-minute words?
We appreciate the time today and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is 4:22. We're a little bit behind today. So we're going to move into public comments.
Don't believe there's any public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing none, we are going to then move on to board member comments. Ms. Jivinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
I'll save them for this evening in the interest of time.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I have none right now.
I have none. And Ms. Gittens?
None at this time.
Ms. Vaughn?
None at this time.
Ms. Morgan?
Okay, so knowing that we're only supposed to talk about the agenda tonight, I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to staff. I was talking to Dr. Pruitt this morning about how things were going, and she was talking about the number of changes that families are making, and it makes sense, because now people have tried it, and they understand how our different modules for instruction work. But that creates a real staffing problem. And so I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we continue to experience change, and I am deeply grateful to all of the people working in the district who are, continue to take deep breaths and hold each other's hand and help each other out, and, you know, we're getting there. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff.
Thank you. Ms. DePree Bruno, did you have any comments?
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, you've been quiet today.
Just a couple of real quick things. Just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I pulled two items from the operations agenda that are related to the indoor air quality and the fogging. And the reason I did that, our plan at this point is to continue emergency fogging, and then we do plan to stick with our schedule this week. But, and beyond that, we are reviewing our process for fogging, and we believe that we could probably find a more efficient way to do it. It was quite a cost to the district. And then we did learn last week that this, from the, from the feds, that we would not, there was not going to be a reimbursable cost. So we just felt that, I do know we had some board concern as well, and we felt we would take that opportunity to review that and bring back what I think will be a better plan. So, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
A question on that, then, how A question on that, then, how are we reporting to parents as far as what we do in the case of positives?
Say that again.
If, excuse me, if we are not doing that any longer, or you say we're not doing it any longer, or we're going to do it in a different way?
We're going to do it probably in a different way. We're going to review that and bring a recommendation forward. In the meantime, we are going to stick with the schedule this week. We feel that's prudent, because, you know, the last time we saw a spike was after the July 4th holiday. This was a labor, you know, the Labor Day holiday, where you have families coming together and maybe not observing the protocols as much as we would like. So we just felt it was prudent to move forward this week. And then beyond that, just go with the emergency fogging whenever we have a positive case in a building. And then while we do that, I know Dr. Savage is looking to move forward with more of a routine that is in a more cost-effective manner than what we saw with this item.
Did you say two, which two, again?
There are two, they are the, see, we've got 13 and 14.
13 and 14, that's what I thought, thank you.
Now, there was another one that we also pulled that wasn't related, and that's the Bay Oaks Recreation Center, Fort Myers Beach, and that was just some language that needed to be changed, and that one will come back.
Okay, thank you.
And was, is it true that, I'm sorry, just something went the wrong way, that the professional, someone was saying that the professional group that was doing the fogging was a temporary measure while they were training our staff to do it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's part of what we're looking at, is trying to see if we can get our staff to get the certificates and the training, they need to be able to do this, so that we wouldn't have to rely on outside sources. That's one of the options that we're reviewing.
And would there be additional, you know, supplements or whatever, once they have that certification?
I'm not that far down the road to answering that question, but certainly that would be something we'd consider, yes.
That's the process that you're reviewing right now.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So is there any good of the order? Anyone? No? Seeing none, our next meeting is at 5:05 for a special meeting, and this meeting is adjourned at 4:29. Thank you.